Okay, so can everyone see the the letter?
Yes.
Yeah.
That should make it a little bigger.
This is just a letter to the board really explaining that they were they we've been working on these changes to the stormwater by law for the past year or over over a year even and last year you may recall I wasn't here but the planning board delegated authority to the Board of Health to be the stormwater permitting authority. Does everyone remember that? And so the planning board can delegate this authority to another board and the Board of Health accepted in the in the changes to the stormwater by law. That authority was being taken from the planning board and given to the Board of Health because you know that's who is really the permitting authority right now. There was there was some, I guess, some members of the Conservation Commission raised the question of why shouldn't it be the Conservation Commission because they do deal with you know stormwater a lot. And so because there was a question, the Select Board put off voting on this at the at the town meeting, I believe. And so what's going to happen is, oh, no, I'm sorry. They recommended the proposed amendments, but recommended keeping the definition of stormwater authority unchanged. So they're still putting it on the town meeting warrant, but the stormwater authority will remain with the planning board. And the planning board is within its rights to delegate that authority to the Board of Health. And this is so that we can talk a little more about who the right entity should be. So that's that's all that that was. There's no action necessary by the board.
So at the Springtown meeting, will there be other changes being proposed or will this by law amendment, will this just not be an issue at at Spring Meeting?
It will be. I mean, hopefully, it won't be an issue, but you will be asked to vote on it. It's we're just keeping the planning board as the stormwater authority.
Gotcha. What other amendments are there? We just sort of a flavor of them.
There's there's a there's a bunch of different changes. You've actually reviewed it several times. This board has reviewed it several times. I can't off the top of my head, you know, tell you what the changes were. One has to do with A and R lots. It's 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 difficult to categorize A and R lots. And when that kicks in a stormwater permit. And so there was changes made to the definitions.
Good, okay, so, okay, all right. Very good, thank you.
We do have correspondence from Groveland. I don't know if everyone, it's just a a notice. And then more recently, we just received an email about our housing production plan. There are some changes that have to be made before the before the state accepts it fully. And so we are very busy right now with town meeting. And so I I would think that the planning board would want to take a look at at the changes before we send it back. And so hopefully sometime in May, we can we can work on those necessary changes. Okay?
Katrina, is there a, you know, a deadline that the state is looking for that? And are the changes substantive or administrative?
Um, it's kind of like, I think one of the things was, do I have the letter here? Let me see.
It wasn't in the packet.
I didn't see it.
Okay.
No.
I must have sent it separately. Let me see if I've got it right here. Ah, there it is. Okay, they want us to add a brief overview analysis of the disabled population. They want us.
Katrina, I have a question. Wasn't this basically written by M? Remind me of the acronym.
MBPC? Yep.
So they're not going to make the changes? I don't understand.
Um, so Ian Ian actually jumped right in and offered to make the changes. And and Angus responded that he really thought that the planning board and the Select Board may be interested in looking at the necessary changes more in depth rather than Ian just doing it. And so we do have time. I also asked Ian, I said, it's a shame that it's a the the year on it is 2024 because it's going to be halfway through 2025 by the time we submit it. And he said, the date, the date of your of your housing production plan is the date that the state accepts it. So it'd be a 2025 date anyway, which is good to know. So that we're covered for three more years from that date. So we could just stretch this out even longer and we're, you know, recovered. So that's all the correspondence I have.
All right. It's it's still only 7:10. Why don't we go to the minutes? I can bring them up. Oh, no, I can't bring them up until you let me. Looks like you got them now. Okay, so this is for the December 17th. Is that too big or is that good?
Fine, that's good.
Fine.
So item number one here. Item number two, first paragraphs. And the last two paragraphs. And then the general business and correspondence.
It all looks familiar.
Yes, doesn't it? Which is reassuring to me. Town Planner Report.
Oh, just one tiny typo, Town Planner Report, the first bullet point. It won't need board approval instead of I.
Oh, good catch.
Well, I think it would have been understood anyway, but.
Administrative details, future items, and adjournment. I move to accept the draft minute meeting, minutes of the meeting for December 17th, 2024 as amended.
Second.
All those in favor, Ray Cook, aye.
And Bardine, aye.
Tim Cronin, aye.
I was not in attendance, so I.
Brian Murphy, aye.
So we have four and one not voting. Thank you. And while we're at it, and while I've got it up, why don't we move on to this January 7th meeting minutes? Next two paragraphs under item one. All right, then. I move to accept the draft minutes of the meeting of January 7th, 2025 as drafted.
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor, Ray Cook, aye.
And Bardine, aye.
And Cronin, aye.
Deb Hamilton, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
It's unanimous, five zero. Thank you. You know, Archie, you don't have a vote. Well, I don't I don't know what he's got in his mind right now. All righty.
Two minutes worth of something.
Two minutes worth of something. Do we have any administrative details that you can mention? Maybe one or two items, Katrina?
But I didn't have any plans to to talk about. I mean, all of them really had to do with the forum. And so we would be talking about that under Agenda Item Five. Mike Fusco isn't at the meeting right now, is he?
Well, we, why don't we just wait a minute and open and then postpone the hearing, okay? Before we go to that.
Unfortunately, the next one is scheduled for 7:30 and the next is 7:45. So you're going to have to find something else to find time to fill the time.
You will do Fusco in there.
Yeah, yes.
I'm sure Ray will sort this out.
I'm not so sure I'll sort it out, but with your help, we'll muddle through. We always aim to find a way to do that.
Katrina, could you put up? I did not print the public notice.
Why don't we go ahead and do that? I have 7:15 now. Do you want me to put it up or you want you to get it, Katrina?
You have it right there?
I think so.
The 29 Pleasant, is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Oh, I've got it.
Have you got it?
Yep.
I've got the pages. I'm just not sure I've got the. There it is, yep. Go ahead and read that.
Yeah, I I got it now. Yeah, legal notice, West Newbury Planning Board. We're so into General Law Chapter 48, Sections 9, 11, and zoning by law, Sections 9.8 and 11.2. West Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 1st, 2025 at 7:15 PM to consider request for a special permit for a common driveway. Parcel is located 29 Pleasant Street, Accessors Map R11, Lot 27D, and the residential C zoning district owner applicant, Matthew George and Mary Ellen Russo, 29 Pleasant Street, West Newbury. To view the application and plan, visit the Planning Board website with a link and and or contact the Town Planner and an email address. Interested persons may participate in the meeting by joining from computer, tablet, or smartphone at the Zoom address noted.
Thank you very much. So the public hearing is is open?
And Mr. Chairman, we have a request for continuance so that it can be continued without any discussion?
Very good. And we need to continue to a date and time certain? What do you suggest?
Did you want, did you want to read the continuance letter or that's fine if you don't?
If I if I may, is there any discussion with this at this time right now or is just a continuance?
Oh, it was my understanding that the applicant wished it to be continue with continued without discussion at this point.
Right, because they're not even here.
Okay. Because I I am the, I I'm next door to the the property that in question at 29. I'm at 25. So there's some issues that are raised.
So there shouldn't be.
We can't talk.
But this is exactly why, sir, we need to have a date and time certain so you know when to come back so we don't miss out on your comments coming forward.
Okay. That's what I that's what I was just trying to understand is is is.
Yes.
If there was going to be any discussion at all, so.
There will be eventually.
Eventually, yeah.
Okay. And and it's it's important to the board that we that we hear your comments.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, until after the sidewalk next week. Katrina, I'm asking you for guidance here because I'm not quite sure how our agenda lays out. I know we're going to be.
Must be May 6th, Ray, right? I mean.
Right, it is. It may 6th would be the next date after the the community forum on April 15th.
Yeah. All right.
Yeah, unless that's already full. I don't know what else we have on May 6th.
We have nothing on that agenda.
Oh, okay, well, so can we continue this on May 6th at 7:15?
Sounds good.
Do we need to vote to do that?
And at what time?
7:15.
You can vote on it, yes.
Okay, I I move that we continue this until May 6th at 7:15.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, Ray Cook, aye.
And Bardine, aye.
Tim Cronin, aye.
Deb Hamilton, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Very good, thank you. The next agenda item is another public hearing on 150 Main Street, but we don't want to start that early either. So it's at 7:20 right now. Katrina, why don't we just talk a little bit about the suggestions from the state on on the proposed MBTA?
Okay, Agenda Item Five.
Yes. There's several things we want to talk about under Agenda Item Five.
Yes.
But I think that maybe just going over what the state said in their review with respect to the definition, I think is a good thing to do.
Okay, let me grab that. You're keeping me on my toes tonight.
Mm hmm.
I should have bookmarked the document. That's my mistake.
Well, this is a new one, right?
Oh, so, yes, I I can put it right up on the screen, too.
Was this a page out of our 124 pages? If so, what page?
No, this was received after.
No, no, it's in.
Oh, no, this is the definition, sorry. The, yeah.
Yeah.
It was right at the beginning or right at the end. It was an appendix, maybe?
There it is.
So page 90, Deb.
Okay, now I can't find it. Okay.
Okay, this is at the actual email. Can everyone see that up on the screen?
Yes.
From Executive Office of Livable Communities. We had a really good meeting with them. I'm I was absolutely shocked. Angus suggested that we send it in last week, which I I wasn't totally prepared to do. I was waiting for after the board to actually review all of the the edits in the by law. But we sent it in because he really wanted to get it back by town meeting.
Yes.
And lo and behold, they they got right back to us within a day or two and set up a meeting on Monday. We met with them on Monday and they had several, I would say, small items that they needed changed, which is very good news because they're small items. We can get it done before town meeting and that means that we don't risk going to town meeting, adopting it, and then them coming back and saying, oh, you've got to make a couple of small changes. And that means coming back to, you know, the fall town meeting. So the changes they wanted made is the definition of gross density. I guess you can't measure gross density. They use the term gross density in their guidelines, but they do not want it as a definition in the actual by law. So all we had to do, Dylan Sussman helped us with this. He basically took out the word gross for gross density, and that meant that in the definitions, it moved up in alphabetical order and then took out the word gross in the rest of the by law. And then the the definition was slightly changed, too, and they approved the definition that he came up with. So those are very small changes. However, the planning board closed their public hearing on the the McMod overlay district by law. So we can't really add that change to the changes that you're approving, the other changes you're approving tonight. Angus and I talked and I and he came up with the idea of, you know, it really has to be an on the floor amendment. However, we we know we received it. The planning board knows about it. They have time to make a recommendation on it. And there's nothing that says they can't make a recommendation on a something that is proposed on the floor of town meeting. So he was asking that you review these that that change to the by law and hopefully offer a positive recommendation so that at town meeting, when we have this on the floor amendment, we can actually say the planning board reviewed it and they recommend approval.
So so I can, if I'm if I'm correct, I can think of a couple of different ways to do it, but on at town meeting, we would.
One of us would move to amend it.
We make the motion, right?
Yeah.
The motion gets seconded and now the by law is on the floor. And during this discussion, then, we can make another motion to make this small change. And then the moderator would call a vote on the motion to amend. And then it would be back to the overall by law.
Yeah, and there's plenty of time to work out that whole scenario so that we are all aware of exactly what needs to be done.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I'm totally opposed to this. I'll tell you why.
Okay.
All this will do is confuse the people about what MBTA is doing and the by law. We should not be trying to amend the by law when we're trying to have people vote for the the overall by law. This is nothing but confusing to people and frankly, in my opinion, it will sound like we we're still not ready for this.
I think I think you're right. And so how do how do we deal? How do we deal with?
We go ahead with the by law that we have with the the changes that we will be talking about later that were on the floor of our public hearing. And if we are fortunate enough to have the MBTA by law pass, we come back in the fall with whatever minor changes are needed. This does nothing but confuse the audience.
I agree with Brian and I think it's possible that by October, there may be other slight changes required, you know, if the state does different things or reviews something that we vote on tonight or whatever. So I think we're better. Our experience is that tweaks should be kept quite separate from Maine.
Yeah, the the many town meetings that I and most of you have attended, floor amendments are they're fraught with problems and confusion will.
Yes. Yeah, I I think that that's correct.
We we take your point, but this is just our experience.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how? How? How demanding is EO HLC about this change? I mean, is this something that they feel has to be done? Or is this something?
Yeah, it it definitely has to be done. They they're open to the board, you know, waiting until the fall to vote or we could vote now and then vote again in the fall. They don't really care. They're very supportive. They appreciate the work West Newbury has done in bringing this forward. They know it's it's a huge haul for us, too. But that is a change that has to be made.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, fine.
It'll be first on the list.
Yes. I think Brian's correct. I I also agree with with Ann that, you know, we might, there might be a couple of other commas missing or whatever that that we can clean up at fall town meeting. And I think it's easier to explain to people at a separate town meeting about it as well.
Presuming that it passes or or we'll be sitting here in the fall coming up with Plan B.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So that's my two cents. Thank you.
No, I, no, Brian, absolutely. I was kind of stole my thunder. I was going to say the same thing. But I I was also thinking this wasn't really like a huge change, you know? But, you know, I agree, it would just cause more confusion and people for, you know, for the wrong reasons, kind of like getting upset about it.
Right, a potential derailleur.
Yep.
Over a word, yeah.
Okay, I think we agree.
Very good. All right, let's see here.
Almost 7:30.
Yeah, 7:28.
Wow.
Can we just go back to the stormwater by law for one second? Are we are we going to see that again, Katrina? Or no, I'm just I'm just trying to follow that because I had a minor comment on it and I just don't know what version we should be looking at.
Okay, we we have already reviewed it and so we will not be looking at it again until you vote on it at town meeting. But I can give you a copy.
Well, okay, why don't you circulate it to everybody then?
Okay.
How small was the the tweak that you found, Tim?
Well, what I I just found it was the definition of like, there was like a definition of common plan of development or something like that. And it just seemed to be vague as I read it.
I forwarded your, didn't you make that suggestion?
I did a while, yeah, a while back.
I forwarded that suggestion.
So maybe it got updated, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe. Or it could be another fall opportunity.
Well, I've got 7:30.
Okay.
So I think we can jump to the second agenda item, which which is 150 Main Street. Mr. Wiles is asking for a special permit under Section 4.2.2C for accessory dwelling unit over 900 square feet. I see that Mr. Wiles is here.
The way we need to read here.
Yes. I was just going to say that being that this is a public hearing, we need to read the notice for it, which I think.
There it is.
There we go.
There we go, yes. Legal notice, West Newbury Planning Board. We're so into General Law Chapter 48, Section 9, 11, and zoning by law, Section 4.2.4 and 11.2. West Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 1st at 7:30 PM to consider request for a special permit to construct a 1,400 square foot accessory dwelling unit. The parcel is located at 150 Main Street, Accessors Map R1, Lot 41C, in the residential B and C zoning districts. Owner, Wile Family Trust, 150 Main Street, West Newbury. Applicant, Christopher and Nancy Wile, 150 Main Street, West Newbury. To view the application and plan, visit the Town Planning Board files as noted or contact the Town Planner at the email noted. Interested persons may participate in the meeting by joining from computer, tablet, or smartphone at the aforementioned Zoom address.
Very good, thank you very much. So I see that we've got a number of people here. Being that this is a public hearing, we will be opening it up to the audience for any comments that that might have. But right now, what we'd like to do, and this is the way we always do these public hearings, is to have a presentation of the the project being proposed by the applicant. Mr. Wiles, do you do you have somebody here or are you going to explain it yourself?
Excuse me, Ray, before we get started, before we get any further, I do have another housekeeping matter while we're doing legal notices.
Okay, go right ahead.
And I did file a a form at the town clerk's office to avoid any potential of a conflict of interest, just to disclose that in 2006, I did some professional work for the Wiles at their residence as part of my practice as an architect. That was completed and nearly 20 years ago and I'm no longer practicing, but they did employ me at that time.
Very good, thank you for that. Thanks for reminding me. And for anybody that's paying attention here that that wonders about this, by declaring something like this, it's just to make to reassure the public that they know what relationships are and that there are no potential conflicts of interest so that everything's on the up and up. Mr. Wiles?
I do, Ray.
Good, do you want to present or do you have somebody here presenting for you?
No, I'll do it, but I just had a chuckle when Ann said that. I couldn't believe it was almost 20 years ago that we.
I know, I had to I had to look at that.
And I know you said you're not practicing, but I thought you didn't need to practice. You were pretty good at the time.
Oh, thank you.
Anyways, shall I start, Ray?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay, I know there's a lot of people here. I don't know the names or who they are, if it's relevant to this, but just a little background, we did a preliminary Planning Board hearing back on March 4th. So for Ray and trying to think who all was there, three out of the five were there. It's going to be repetitive and I'm going to go through generally the same format. So basically, I'm Chris Wile, moved to West. So basically, I'm Chris Wild, moved to West Newbury. In nineteen ninety-four, I bought our land here at one fifty Main Street. It's seven point six two acres. We built a two and a half story center entrance colonial, which is about twenty eight hundred and fifty-two square feet. Then in nineteen eighty-five, I built a large barn on the property, thirty-two feet by forty-eight feet. Uh, it's got a large loft in it, which will eventually be closed in if I do this ADU project. And I'd use that barn for many years for cabinet shop, but it sat idle because I haven't been in business for many years, and that's the photo of the barn. So the barn has existed on the property for, I guess, thirty years. Uh, it's not like I built this to create the ADU or anything. Uh, both the barn and the house are located in the very back corner of the property. And I have a driveway that's fifteen hundred feet long, comes in off of Main Street. And I have no immediate neighbors and and the property is very secluded. I mean, I have neighbors, but no uh, structures within hundreds of yards of my house. So we don't see anybody. So my daughter, who lives with us this past December, came up with a brilliant idea and asked if she could put a ADU in the barn. And whereas West Newbury had just passed the regulation, it seemed like a good idea. So we started in on the process. And I had an architect uh, draw out nine hundred square feet, which sometimes it seems like a lot of forties and then other times it doesn't. And it doesn't seem like a lot of square footage because eventually my wife and I are gonna move into the ADU and my daughter will live in the house. I just couldn't see myself in nine hundred square feet. In particular, we had another twenty-one hundred feet of the barn space just floating around that could be used. So read the regulations and saw that you could request via the special permit process additional square footage. So we're looking to do an additional five hundred square feet, which would be a total of fourteen hundred square feet. I just think it'd work better for flow, and we're we're trying to jockey this building for when my daughter lives there with her needs and then when we move there for our needs. So it's this the spaces that kind of overlap, which create need for a little bit more. And I think one of the key things to understand is that I'm gonna be building nine hundred feet at a minimum. I would like to build the additional. But regardless, all the square footage that is going to be built out will be built within an existing structure. The only exterior modifications will be a a little porch on the front, which will be about six feet deep by fourteen feet long. And there'll be some skylights and possibly um, some windows cut in. So no significant exterior changes, uh, no grading or anything like that. The barn exists. It has electric to it currently. Uh, it's got a heating system in it, which I will have to upgrade because of certain regulations. The septic will get connected to my existing system, which I uh, three and a half years ago, just out of a abundance of caution, decided to have it upgraded so that I didn't have to replace it in a panic mode. It was thirty something years old, and I thought, let's just be proactive. So we did the septic, which in the photograph that Katrina has up there, the septic is actually right in the foreground. We took the time to design it so there was uh, no mounds or the vent pipe is tucked behind the back of the barn. So it it's very indiscreet and you don't even see it. So any septic coming out of the building will flow into a a pit with a pump and it will pump up to the existing system. So that's that'd be the extent of any exterior modifications. There is currently a driveway goes into the barn. You can see the overhead door there, which I used to have delivery trucks and and such come in and out. So no driving space will be required or anything like that. And I did note previously that the only thing that would really happen be minimal grading if any deliveries cause ruts or any things like that. So there isn't even any grading work and matter of fact, actually, last summer, I had a paint to come in and repaint the whole barn, so that's not even gonna change. The special permit requirements are kind of in flux between the state and uh, West Newbury. Trying to get on the same page. But within the zoning bylaws, section eleven point two six, it talks about the findings of the planning board and what are the criteria for consideration. I'll read them uh, just straight out and then tell you my quick responses. So the number one is the specific site is an appropriate location for the use of structure. And to me, it seems like it's a great location uh, for this type and use as the structure already exists. B, the use developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. My comment would be there will be no effect to the neighborhood because anybody's gonna live in the ADU is currently living on the property. Uh, C, there will be any undue nuisance, serious hazard to vehicles, pedestrians, and adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided to ensure the proper operation of the proposed use structural condition. And my response there is there will be no nuisance or hazard to anyone based on this ADU project. I think that criteria is for different types of projects on the special permit. D, the proposed use of structure will be in harmony with the general purpose of the bylaw. And I believe that this will be in uh, harmony with the bylaw. And in addition, I think it aligns with the town's missions uh, to create more affordable housing, which is exactly what we're doing for uh, somebody who could probably never uh, afford to move to West Newbury. Number E, the requested use will not overload any public water drainage or any other municipal systems to such an extent that the requested use or any develop use in the immediate area or in any area of the town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare. My response is that there will be no additional use of municipal services. My daughter already lives here on the property. We are on well water, so no additional water and no significant grading as the structure already exists. I think we satisfy the five criteria that the planning board needs to take a look at. Ultimately, that's up to the planning board to decide. That's your choice, but that's just my opinion. So I guess basically, we're just trying to take an underutilized building, uh, convert it to uh, affordable housing. What the other thing it does, it allows my wife and I to stay here on the property and age in place, which was something we never thought we're gonna have the opportunity to do. So we'll be, like I say, in a certain timeframe, we'll flip out to the ADU. My daughter and her husband will stay in the house. Whether she knows it or not, they can take care of us. And the property can.
How she does.
This is not being recorded, right?
It is.
I'm joking. Um, this this allows the property to stay um, in my family. We built the house. Uh, I'm a cabinet maker. I did the interior, and the thought of ever having to sell it makes me very uncomfortable. So this allows it at least to stay in my family for another generation, hopefully a lot longer. So I guess in summary, I feel the request is reasonable and consistent with both the West Newbury zoning regulations and the state ADU requirements. I'm requesting the planning board to support this endorsement of a special permit. And I requested a number of waivers, basically topography and drainage and and such like that that are irrelevant to this project because the structure already exists. So if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Very good. I'll go to each planning board member in turn just to get your comments, but I'll start off by, Chris, uh, how many square feet is the main house?
Twenty-eight hundred and fifty-two.
So, uh, and to remind everybody, the audience included, the special permit is not to have the ADU. Chris Wild has the the by right, the ability to make an ADU in his barn as it stands and as confirmed by our our, I guess Sam is the commissioner is the proper title for Sam. Uh, the special permit part that is being requested here is only for the extension uh, of additional square feet that could be built in the ADU depending on our vote tonight. And I asked Chris about the total number of square feet in the house because to me, personally, it's just one member of the planning board keeping it under half the square footage of the main residence, I think, strikes me as a prudent way to go. And when we were discussing the ADU bylaw, we were ahead of the state. And that was one of the things that we discussed. And I'm I'm aware here that um, we're sort of setting a precedent. But given that we've got uh, an existing structure um, within which the ADU will be created. Um, and it's not, it's not creating a larger structure on the site and whatnot. It it my my first impression is that this seems reasonable, but I want to hear from each planning board member, and then we'll open it up to the uh, audience for their comments. So I I guess I'll I'll just kind of go across my screen. Brian Murphy happens to be next. Brian, do you have any comments?
Oh, I do. Yes. You you.
Go right ahead.
I have several questions and well, I I guess I'd like we'll get an answer as we go. I recall when we discussed the state the changes the state was making and requiring versus the ADU bylaw that we had here. And we had many discussions, a number of them with Sam Jocelyn, our building commissioner. I recall something about that the the state bylaw would be interpreted versus the towns. And I I think I I'd just like to clarify if that's an issue here. And also, I'm wondering if we really need a legal opinion on on that topic.
I'm guessing that the commissioner is here. I'm seeing Sam's iPad there. There he is.
Hello.
Hi, Sam.
So on being less restrictive, we can absolutely be less less restrictive, meaning that we can allow for larger ADUs. We cannot be more restrictive in our regulations. So I that's pretty clear with um, the guidance the state's handed down to us. So allowing something larger through special permit is absolutely allowed. Uh, it actually takes it out of the status of the protected use ADU and something the state's now referring to as a local ADU, which will be a basically a a town allowed ADU that allows more than what the state protected use ADU would allow.
So doing this by special permit now is not a problem.
It's only a problem if we try to use a special permit for something the state allows as of right. Where this goes outside that, where well within our rights to or to ask for a special permit.
And Brian, excuse me for buttoning in here while I got Sam up. Uh, Sam, any comment on the uh, ADU size, uh, around half the main domicile size?
Mine is to interpret and enforce.
No opinions.
Yep, that is, that is your call. Uh, anything over nine hundred requires a special permit. That's nine hundred and one plus, so.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so it it sounds like in Sam's opinion, we don't need any legal guidance on this. And I I understand what you said about the restriction restrictiveness. Um, next comment. The barn, I and I I looked at one of the drawings that were submitted here, and I think we 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 should look at those drawings as well, but the exterior dimensions of the barn comes out to fifteen hundred and thirty-six gross square feet. Uh, if I read that correctly. So I'm I'm puzzled at how we arrived at fourteen hundred square feet.
Want me to respond?
Yes, Chris, go right ahead.
So that's the the footprint of the building, Brian. There's currently a loft in the building. And with the ADU, we're gonna bring that loft, the loft takes about two thirds of the building. With the ADU, we're gonna bring that loft all the way to the front. So the square footage of the building will be a little over three thousand feet. The ADU will only use fourteen hundred. We will go back thirty-one feet on the first floor and drop a wall. And that tiny little space in the back of the first floor will be my new cabinet shop that I have left. Uh, up on the second floor, because of the pitch of the roof and the eaves, we're gonna have to drop sidewalls. So it'd only be about sixteen feet wide and also run thirty-one feet back, and there'd be a little bit of storage left in the back up there. So that would account for the square footages of the building.
Okay, my my point is that the the usable space in there exceeds fourteen hundred. And and I suppose, you know, perhaps down the road, somebody might end up with it, you know, using the entire building. And I I I'm just wondering about how that should be interpreted. You know, when when we talked about these ADUs, most of it was, you know, a a very small, specific structure outside one's house or attached to the house or a section of an interior house, very defined space. So, yeah, I I guess I'm I'm a little concerned about that and and I'll I'll go back to the building commissioner and and back to the question of do we need a legal opinion on this?
So, um, oops, my my on. No, the state also, I guess, addressed the issue of having smaller units within a larger building. And what they talk about is the, uh, I guess, a unit being self-contained. So the way the state has given us guidance is if that unit doesn't go directly through a door or stairway into another part of the building, uh, it's considered separate. So if you have to go outside to enter the woodshop or go outside the ADU to get to the storage, um, the state is considering that not part of the unit as the unit is self-contained is what they're kind of hanging their hats on.
Yeah, I would I would also, uh, when we were talking about this, uh, a couple of years ago, Brian, I one of the things that kept coming up was the idea of, you know, the second floor of a separate garage building. That that could be an ADU, and that's that's another situation where the ADU would be a smaller space within a larger structure. I think the thing that makes it a little confusing in Chris's case, and I think you're, I think it's, I'm glad you brought this up because it is it is kind of a philosophical thought. Is that I think what, Chris, are you proposing it'll be part of the first floor and part of the second floor that will be your ADU?
Yes. And can I address one of Brian's concerns?
Yeah, absolutely.
You you mentioned about the square footage, and we deliberately looked at fourteen hundred square feet because I personally believe it should be accessory to the main dwelling, which is why I tried to stay under the fifty percent. And I could not foresee based on what we're gonna have to go through with your hers regulations to bring even this component of the barn up to uh, the hers compliance. Uh, it would be a major project to get the rest of the space up to it. Plus, then I would lose my shop. And so as long as I'm around, that's not gonna happen. And I would think we would also have to, and Sam can get into this. I think we would also probably have to come back for another special permit if we look to increase the space at that time, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's something who knows what, you know, right, circumstances dictate ten years from now. I I, yeah.
And Chris, when you when you're saying yours and the acronym hers, you're referring to what's required for the heating and conditioning of the space, right? Insulation, BTUs and all that, right?
Yes, and Sam can speak more to that because it's a a significant process of, you know, it sounds like all the insulation in the barn is gonna have to get pulled out. And they're gonna have to foam all the structure to get it up to the new energy codes. The windows are gonna have to get removed and replaced and uh, this many, many criteria that become involved, and it's a very cumbersome and expensive process to uh, comply. So just to do it for the fourteen hundred square feet is 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 more than I plan to chew off, so uh, no intention to really go looking any any larger on this project. And particularly, like I say, it's where I'm gonna end up retiring and living to, and fourteen hundred feet is just about perfect size for what I will need, so.
Gotcha. I want to bounce it back to Brian, though.
Yeah, it it's it's my presumption then that being a special permit, we we can add criteria as we may need to develop here that requires any substantive change in, let's say, your workspace or whatever ten years from now to seek another permit or or some 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 review. I I, you know, I'm just thinking, you 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 you've got a structure that net 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 is bigger than your house. So.
Gotcha. Sam, am I correct that that any substantive change, as Brian put it, that would end up coming to your office? And whether it's you or your successor, somebody would then say, hold on here, we we need a new special permit or we can't make those changes to the accessory dwelling unit without
or we can't make those changes to the accessory dwelling unit without some sort of process?
Right, so with the accessory dwelling units, especially now that we have the state-regulated ones, the state's made it very clear that we need to be very specific on our certificate of occupancy as to what the ADU is. Is it an as-of-right? Is it one that is issued through special permit? And anything like a protected use that would go over that protected use standard would need a new special permit if the bylaws required it, or if there was a local ADU, which this would be, that was issued by special permit to alter those conditions, it would have to go back through process.
And are there plans that have to be submitted to some registry? Or is it all kept in town? Or how does that work?
So the EOHLC is asking that we have a methodology to track ADUs, both protected use and local. Initially, it was going to be a yearly report, but they backed away from that because the logistics were just a little too much. So we just need to be ready to provide that info, which my software does automatically. I can just do a search, you know, with key terms.
And then, but I guess what I'm asking is, is there going to be a place where the floor plan of the ADU is accessible and everybody can see those interior walls that define the limits of the ADU as compared to the rest of the barn?
Yep, and that will be held with the building permit and the certificate of occupancy.
And I have one more question, then I'll, I know, I told you, I'm taking up a lot of time. But the last, and this will probably involve Sam, I get his opinion. But, and, you know, it's because we haven't seen one of these before. And it's a little unusual with, you know, what's being asked for here than, you know, we might have expected with a small ADU. But should the fire department be involved? You're now going to have two large occupied structures down there. Is that a concern at all? And maybe that's best for the fire chief, but I'll look for Sam's opinion.
Yep, so with the submission of the permit, the fire department's going to have to weigh in. All regulations that normally apply would apply to the ADU. It does get a separate address. We just received model addressing through the state, which we already have that in place anyway. So yeah, it would definitely be something the fire department will weigh in on the permit. And anything required under their code, as well as under my code, would be applicable.
God, I never thought about the separate addressing. That's a whole nother thing. I didn't either, I know.
It's a nightmare.
Yeah, yeah. All right, well, that's my list at the moment. Thank you. And by the way, for everybody here, this is a public hearing. We want to hear from the public. But because ADUs are pretty new in West Newbury, I think it's prudent to be careful here. And I appreciate, Brian, appreciate the fact that you have those questions. Because like I said, we're sort of setting precedent here. Oh, it's important. Ann?
First of all, ADUs are fairly new in town, but there have been a number of them permitted. They just have not required special permits. So lest everybody think we've never, this has never been done before. It hasn't been done by the planning board, but Sam has permitted others. Some are under construction, I think, some are maybe even in use. And I just wanted to kind of respond to Brian by saying, like any other building project in town, this requires a building permit and, you know, all the usual things will happen. All the records will be public, just as they are for any other project and any special permit project. There's an element of enforcement that has to happen. But I think Sam explained pretty well how that works. So mostly just wanted to respond to Brian. I don't have any questions for Chris.
Yeah, yeah, it's one of these trust but verify things.
I know, I know. But they all are.
Yeah, I mean, you get right down to even common driveways, right? Yeah. Ms. Hamilton, Deb, do you have anything? You're muted.
Yes, I just wondered about the number of bedrooms we're talking about here. Chris stated that he'd already upgraded the septic system. I'm wondering how many bedrooms there are in the main house? And is this a two-bedroom ADU?
So there's a, I've already been to the Board of Health and we've had discussions. What we're going to do, the main house is technically a four-bedroom house because that's what the septic is built for. It's always been four. We put a new system in for four bedrooms. If you counted rooms, you could sit there and go, well, there's actually five bedrooms in the main house. We don't use them because we've got a couple of offices. But the answer to the question is, we have to put a deed restriction on the house for three bedrooms and the ADU for one. So that's to comply with the septic regulations. And my other comment to that is that the people living in the house currently, we're just going to disperse two of them into the ADU and two of them in the house. So it's not like I'm adding capacity to my septic system. And it's quite honestly, a lot less capacity in the house when I had all my kids living here in the first.
Right, yeah, a four-bedroom would assume as many as eight people living there. And that's not going to be the case in all likelihood, although you could have grandchildren on the way.
But again, this all, shall we say, flows through the Board of Health, so.
Oh, nice, Ann.
Just wanted to do the math. Thank you. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Deb. Tim?
So when this was presented at a prior meeting, was that an informal presentation? I'm trying to remember.
It was.
Yeah, okay. I had asked a bunch of questions. And Chris basically recounted the same discussion that we had, I think, that evening where he went through all the criteria. So I don't think there's a need to go through each of the criteria again as far as issuing to the special permit for over 900 square feet. I just had a question, how the amount of square footage for the primary residence, I guess you call it, is determined? Like, is that something that, again, Sam's office would do?
Well, the assessors' records have it. That's where I took the number from.
So that's where you, that's where we're taking the number from?
That's what I'm getting taxed on, yes.
Okay.
And it's an accurate number, because if it was too high, believe me, I would have a long time ago looked to get it squeezed down.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know, is Sam still on?
He is.
Okay.
Yeah, still here.
Yeah, so, you know, Chris refers to the assessors' records. Is there anything, you know, when you get this type of application, it's kind of important to validate the square footage, you know, of the primary residence there, right? So is there, is there anything that, any plans or anything that should be submitted to your office? Or do we just rely on the assessors' records?
It's going to be up to you if you want to rely on the assessors. I think they're going to be relatively accurate. The state has determined a measurement methodology for using interior wall measurements rather than exterior. No one really measures like that for anything other than this new protected use ADU. It was something we tried them not to do because everyone else measures from the exterior. I don't see it being really that, I guess, I want to say it's not important, but not worth the effort to have Chris measure every interior space in his house and deduct for the exterior walls.
Let me, let me just ask one other thing here, Sam. I mean, the state doesn't have a restriction on how much additional square footage you could put on the ADU through special permit, right?
No, no.
So, so when I said that being less than half of the main residence, that's rather arbitrary on my part. There's nothing that, that doesn't tie into the state regulations or our current bylaw in any stretch.
No, other than mirroring, you know, language for smaller homes. Like if it was 1,200 square feet, your max would be half of the 1,200 being 600 rather than nine would show that it's subordinate.
Although even in that situation, yeah, they could come to us for a special permit to go back up to the nine if they wanted, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
So that, Ray, the current bylaw, I know that the state bylaw supersedes this. This says the floor area of an accessory dwelling unit shall be no greater than half the floor area of the principal dwelling or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller, right?
Right.
Where the half comes in.
Yes.
And then for the.
But it's what, it's whichever one is smaller.
Yeah, whichever is smaller, yeah.
So what we're doing is reviewing a request to exceed that language, that the result of those calculations. And there's nothing in our bylaw currently or in the state bylaw that says you can approve extra square footage through a special permit process, but then there will be a cap of no more than. There's nothing like that. So in my mind, it kind of makes sense. I kind of, I, I'm kind of at ease with what Chris is proposing, but there's no legal requirement that we keep it under half the square footage of the main unit. If I got that right, Sam?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Sam, then I would ask, you know, in the package for the meeting tonight, there are changes to the ADU bylaw, right? And among these, you know, relate to the accessory dwelling unit special permit. And it talks about an area that may be greater than 900 square feet, but no larger than 1,500 square feet. So is that what the state law basically says at this point?
No, the special permit piece that is in our second round was due to a suggestion from the town manager that we import some of the language from the old bylaw into the special permit portion to give some better guidance to the board moving forward, so.
And is that true, that the following sentence that's there that says a special permit should not be granted for an ADU special permit that is greater than one-half the square footage of the principal dwelling unit, that's not, that's not a part of the state law?
No, currently, our special permit basically gives the planning board an open book. It's a simple.
Oh, I understand the current bylaw, yes, yes. Yeah, but I was just wondering, because I just don't, we're trying not to conflict with the state law. I just want to make sure that, you know, that language that was being proposed, that was in the materials as a proposed change, wasn't from the state law that we should be cognizant of, but.
No, none of that under special permit is related to the state law in any way. That's all unique to West Newbury.
And just for those of you who are in attendance tonight, I mean, we do have on our agenda a separate public hearing, which we will be opening to discuss changes to the ADU bylaw proposal coming before town this spring. But that's, that's a little later. And yeah, Tim, I, if I, I don't know if you remember, I was kind of taken aback by this number appearing out of nowhere, this 1,500 square feet or whatever. And I think that came out of select board discussions.
Right.
Very good. That's all I had, Ray. Thank you.
Very good. I don't think our associate member is on tonight. Yeah, Brian? Could we put up the site layout drawing? Yeah, Chris, do you have floor plans?
Are you looking for the buildings or floor plans? I didn't submit floor plans because I'm not drawing.
The building, how the buildings relate to each other. There's a drawing out there, yeah.
There's a site plan in there. I submitted.
Oh, a site plan? Yeah.
Site plan?
Tell you what I can do. I'm going to jump in here real quick.
Is that good enough?
Oh, there you go.
There's actually a better one, Katrina, which was the Google Earth with the cut with the boundary lines.
That's the septic plan.
There it is. Well, it's turned the wrong way, but it makes me dizzy.
That's true. Actually, Katrina, if you, if you stop sharing, I'll jump in real quick.
Rotate it and zoom it in a little bit.
So here we are. Here's the driveway.
Yeah.
And then here's the layout driveway. Currently terminates here. What you can't see is the access to the front of the barn right in here. You can see my mouse cursor, right?
Yes.
And so this is the barn. This is the main dwelling unit. Does that help at all, Brian? Yep, yep. Well, it's also for people who may be listening.
Yeah, it's all the way in the back corner of the lot, too. And if you zoom out a little further, yeah, you can see my nearest neighbors there, quite a distance away.
A ways away. Yes, they are. That doesn't reflect on your personality, does it, Chris?
Yes, it does. I like to have my peace and quiet.
It absolutely does.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. All right, this is a public hearing. So if there's anybody in attendance who would like to weigh in on this special permit application, now would be a good time to do so. If you're, if you're familiar with Zoom, there's a way to raise your hand. And you can do that. That pops you to the top. And if, if you're not familiar with Zoom that way, you can just unmute and speak up, and I will recognize you.
They all love me. They're in favor of it.
Well, let's not jump to contusions.
Come on, Ray.
I think you've got a neighbor there. Like, Posey's there.
There's a few neighbors on.
Yeah.
All right. I'm just going to leave that open just for a second more. All right, then, saying that no one wants to weigh in or ask questions at this point, I think that we can go to our deliberation.
Ray, do you think it's worth taking a quick look through the waiver requests?
Yeah, do you have those?
In writing someplace?
Was there waiver requests?
Aren't there waiver requests?
Yeah, Chris, Chris mentioned.
That he had submitted them, but I didn't see them.
A number of them.
There's a raised hand.
Did you see a raised hand? I keep, I go back and forth. There is. There you go, Heather Connor. Go ahead, Heather.
Hi, thank you.
Oh, by the way, Heather, excuse me. It's a requirement by state law. You have to mention your name and your address.
Excellent. I was just trying to get my video going. And so I'm going to forget, forget that part and focus. I just wanted, my name's Heather Connor and I live at 141 Main Street. I'm across all those woods and then across Main Street. And I'm one of his closest neighbors. I can maybe see a light on at his house at night if I stare really hard. I just want to say I support the project. I think it's just very creative and a good use of space. And I like his creative planning for aging is super, too. So I thought someone ought to speak up who's here.
I appreciate that.
That's me. So thank you for, it's been very informative and I appreciate the project.
Well, I'm glad you raised your hand and you spoke up. Thank you very much. Chris, did you come across the, any kind of little list of waivers that you had in mind?
Yeah, I submitted that with the letter when I submitted the package. It's middle of the thing. I'm requesting waivers on the submittal of perimeter survey, topographic plan, floodplain elevations and drainage schemes. And I go on to further say, I don't think they're relevant and they'd be burdensome for projects such as this because the building already exists. So there's, you know, I think those are for when you're building a new project.
Understood. Sam, I see that your iPad's still here. Do you have any problems with Mr. Wiles' waiver requests?
No, I can find the barn.
Okay.
Not to throw Sam under the bus, Ray, but when I started in on this on the 900 square feet, Sam had already said, you know, the barn exists and we've got the surveys and there'll be no need for a certified perimeter plot plan. So I should.
I just wanted to keep things on the up and up. And I'm glad that Brian asked to kind of review those real quick. And thank you for your reassurance, Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right, well, I get to, at this point, I think I close the public hearing part of the meeting. And then the planning board, we have our deliberations, which are still public. We're just going to move on to that. Any further discussion I hear in the planning board? Uh, any further discussion, um, I hear in the planning board? If not, I, I would like to move that we, uh, grant the special permit request.
Are you closing the public hearing? Said you're gonna post.
Wait a minute, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
You, you're looking to vote on this tonight?
I, I was. I'll tell you what, let me, let me, let me do, and, uh, do we need to vote to close the public hearing part? Is that what you were gonna say?
Yeah, unless you want to leave it open. It seems like Brian's maybe looking for more input or.
Well, I, I don't know. This is, it, it, it's a big deal. We are gonna end up discussing, you know, the ADU bylaw in, in another public hearing. I'm, and Katrina has to draft the decision and, and whatnot. I'm not sure I'm ready to vote. I like the project, but I'm, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable.
I see. Well, um, first of all, let me do this. Uh, I move that we close the, uh, public hearing portion of this special permit request.
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Cronin. So is there any further discussion on closing the public hearing part of this agenda item? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of closing the public hearing portion, uh, say aye. Ray Cook, aye?
Ann Bardeen, aye.
Tim Cronin, aye.
Deb Hamel, aye.
Yep, right, Murphy, aye.
All right, so that's unanimous. Okay. Uh, here's, here's what I propose, uh, uh, Brian, that I, I make the motion and then we have the discussion on whether or not uh, to, to, uh, carry on with the vote. And if, if, if not, then I can withdraw the motion. Is it with that?
Do we need a motion to have that discussion?
Well, okay, all right. Yeah, okay, I was just thinking on the rules and point of order and all that kind of stuff, but. All right, so, uh, here, here's where I stand on, on whether or not to take the vote tonight. Um, I think it's fresh in all of our minds. We did have the pre-application hearing. And we've had input from the commissioner, the proposal by Chris, uh, input from the butters, uh, um, I, I know we're gonna be talking about changes to the proposed ADU. We're gonna be talking about proposed changes to the town of West Newbury ADU bylaw to bring it in compliance with the state. But I don't see anything about this particular special permit application um, that, that runs into any conflict with those. So I don't see any reason to delay it. And in fact, I think it's better to do it while it's fresh in everybody's mind. Um, and in front of everybody here. But, uh, that's my opinion, and I respect yours, Brian. You know, I always respect your opinion about things. And I'd want to hear from Ann and Tim and Deb as well about whether or not you think it's appropriate to vote so quickly when, uh, I, it appears I inadvertently took people by surprise.
If we still have Sam here, is it appropriate to ask whether in his opinion, there's anything in the ADU cha- the here, the changes to the bylaw that he thought might be relevant to this project? Or? No.
I, I can, I can weigh in on that. So the, the special permit, um, the changes that are being proposed were all the criteria that West Newbury used to have on the as-of-right, uh, ADUs. Uh, it's been proposed that we move those criteria to the special permit, which would be, um, you know, owner occupied and some other requirements that Chris is basically meeting. And the only thing that was subjective to a certain degree was how, how much larger than the nine hundred could you be? And the fifteen hundred square foot that was in there was just kind of a pulled out of the air based on, you know, kind of an average home size of that twenty-five to three thousand square foot ish type size. Um, so it's really, I don't, I don't think it's gonna have any um, impact whether it was in place now or whether it gets voted in, in the spring on, uh, Chris's project. Um, I'm trying to think if there's anything that would be, you know, uh, I, I guess any special permit would have the same issues and the one issue I have with, um, isn't, it just isn't specific to Chris's. Anyway, I, I won't, I won't drag that out.
So Ray, it's probably worth pointing out to people and maybe reminding ourselves, too, that this current application is submitted under the existing West Newbury AD, uh, AD bylaw now in effect. What we're gonna be discussing will be something that may or may not, you know, we, we assume will be adopted at town meeting. That will be a slightly different set of rules than the one that's enforced now. Is that a correct characterization?
That's my understanding. And the other, the other, uh, understanding I have on all this is even if the town rejects the proposed changes to our existing bylaw in the spring, the state
State governs.
On ADU will guy, will govern in any case.
Right.
And what Chris is proposing here does not run afoul of any of the state guideline or state, it's not a guideline, it's, it's a. It's a law.
Mister Chairman, could I just, um, ask Sam for a clarification on, on the bylaw that's in effect for this application? Um, right now, the way it's written, Sam, um, and we've talked about this in the office, there's a bunch of, um, requirements for an ADU that is less than nine hundred square feet. And then under C, um, special permits, you're allowed to, uh, apply for a special permit for an ADU that's larger than nine hundred square feet. In that case, do all of these conditions apply automatically or would the planning board have to pick and choose any of these conditions if they wanted to apply them to the over nine hundred square foot um, unit?
So when this was originally written, that section C was left open so that, uh, the planning board couldn't condition how they see fit. Um, so that those conditions that are above in section B don't carry down into C. It's just C gives the planning board permission to issue a special permit for a larger ADU and condition it. You know, the assumption was most of those conditions that were in the smaller ones would carry forward into the larger, but it wasn't written that way so that there could be exceptions.
And so the board should be aware that it's up to them to add any of these conditions that they feel should, should apply to a special permit if you grant the special permit.
And that should probably be discussed before we have a vote.
Yes, agreed.
Agreed. To my point, I, I think we're putting the cart before the horse here. I'm, I'm all for going through that list, but and, and, and I think it's appropriate, but I think we should come back at the next meeting with, with that list and nail this down and then vote.
I've got the list in front of me.
It, it's not a big list, is it?
Um, there's eight of them.
Just very quickly, the first few words of each. What are we?
Um, the accessory dwelling unit will be a complete separate dwelling unit um, that has a separate entrance. The floor area, well, cannot be larger than nine hundred square feet. We're not, we won't be applying that one. There shall be no more than one accessory dwelling unit on a lot. The owners of the single-family dwelling must continue to occupy at least one of the dwelling units. Any new separate outside entrance serving an ADU shall be clearly secondary to the entrance of the principal single-family dwelling. No new curb cuts, adequate off-street parking. And it has to be held by the same owner.
Yeah, my understanding, Sam, that the, the state is, uh, doesn't, will not allow the owner occupied restriction in the future.
For over nine hundred square feet, you can, you can apply that condition.
With special permit, they do.
Yes.
But I think, I'm in the meeting. I think this is pretty straightforward. I think we've actually discussed most of those things already tonight.
Yeah, we have. Yeah, you're right.
Um, what you could do is, I mean, you don't necessarily have to vote on it, but you could vote to have me, um, put together a decision granting the special permit, um, that you can review at your next meeting and take your official vote and then sign it.
That sounds similar to what, the way we've handled things like this in the past.
Yeah, it, yeah, I think if, if that makes Brian more comfortable, then I think that's okay. Uh, Deb, Tim? You're feeling voting now or, or, or going with Katrina drafting things up and we'll, we'll handle it at the next one?
I, I'm, I'm ready to vote now, but if the consensus is that you'd like to see it in writing first, I, I, you know, I appreciate that.
And depending on when we were gonna continue this, we're gonna get into a Tim problem if we go to May, right?
Yeah.
If that.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, uh, uh, Tim's up to speed on this. We don't want to miss his vote.
I mean, I know you have a pretty full agenda on the fifteenth, but should we try to?
I think we could probably sneak it in on the fifteenth, don't you?
Only if we meet earlier. We can't do it. We cannot do this at seven o'clock on.
With the forum, no.
It's not appropriate.
Yeah.
Chris, go ahead. You have some comment?
Yeah, um, I'm not sure what, how the decision that Katrina would write up would change anybody's perspective on this. And I'm probably gonna shoot myself in the foot. I would prefer you voted tonight. Um, we tried to move the process on a little uh, to be efficient and get this thing moving. Um, you know, got them living in the house and we want to get the project. So delay it another month. Um, I, I just not sure that's the best use, um, of the time. You know, if I have to do nine hundred feet, I would do the nine, but I prefer to do the fourteen hundred, and I'd like to know which direction we're going in.
Gotcha.
If that's possible.
All right, so, um, so.
If I could, Ray, you know, I, I think if that's, you know, if we are gonna vote this evening, we gotta have a pretty good understanding what instructions we give Katrina about the conditions, right?
Don't we sometimes vote and then work on conditions later? No?
I, I think the final wording, definitely. You're absolutely right, Ann, but you know, if there's like some, something specific, I think that we're thinking of.
The only condition I can think of that, that, uh, that we need to impose here, because there aren't, I mean, all those conditions that Katrina read, they're all covered. The only one that, uh, would be the owner occupied um, condition.
Right.
I have no problem with that as a condition because that's the only reason we're doing it and.
Yeah, and, and this would be in perpetuity. So it would affect any future considerations, but I remember specifically, it doesn't, the owner can occupy either one of them as we discussed it.
And again, my, my feeling, if I had written the regulation and being at select board meetings, I recuse myself from any discussion on this because of what I'm doing. A- as a resident of the town, I would have liked to see that be part of the regulation that one of the two should be owner occupied. I think that's reasonable. Um, I would hate to see this.
That's as it stands now. That's, that's existing bylaw.
Yeah. I don't have any objection if you want to put that in. I think that's.
Okay. All right, that's the only condition I was thinking of as well.
All right, well, I know that Deb and I are ready to vote now.
I'm ready to vote, too.
I'm ready to vote, yep.
So, so let me understand. So you know, this is a big deal. You know, this is the first, uh, special permit hearing and, and, you know.
And, and we're setting precedent. It is a big deal.
Yeah. Um, it, it just seems to me, I, I, I'm in favor of the project. I just think from what we've done in the past, we have the decision before us, we have conditions in writing, and I don't see why we can't have that done for us. Um, for, uh, and we can meet earlier than the forum on April fifteenth and just do it the way we do every other special permit. I, I think frankly, this opens us up to undue criticism. I, I don't see the need for it. I'd rather have the writing in front of us tonight.
Okay, so the, the criticism that you think this may open us up to is that we're voting on something with not, without knowing the precise language of the condition?
Yes.
Okay, just, just wanted to.
Um, I can, I can read you how the condition is written.
But we could also meet at six thirty on the fifteenth.
I'd much rather do that.
We have a couple more big things tonight, too, so we need to.
I think that, that, um, a- as much as I may be disappointing Mr. Wiles, I think, uh, delaying it two weeks, meeting a little early on the fifteenth, having the, uh, condition written up ahead of us, I don't think that's an undue burden on the applicant. Um, so what do you say we do that?
I, I think that's a great idea.
I figured you would, Brian. Deb, Ann, are you all right with that?
I'm willing to do that, yep.
Um, could I ask a question of, um, Mr. Wiles? You were reading how you met the criteria earlier? Was that something that you had submitted to us?
Those were the special permit criteria.
That's special permit criteria. We'll, we'll go over that.
Yeah, that's those, yeah, but I mean, you, you, you can, if, so those are, those are Mr. Wiles's opinions about why he feels his special permit application should be granted according to the existing bylaw and our criteria for granting a special permit.
But they're a good start for when I am writing up all the findings that you need to make?
Well, typically, those are the findings in the decision. And again, if we do this on the fifteenth.
Don't wondering if he could send them to me if they haven't been sent.
They're in the bylaw. They're in our bylaw under findings for.
No, but didn't, didn't you explain why you thought you met those?
I did. I can drop those off for you, Katrina.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, so here's, here's what I propose. And let's say I've closed, I've closed the public hearing by boat. So we're not continuing the public hearing. But what we're doing is setting a new agenda item for, um, six thirty or six forty-five? What do you guys think?
Six thirty.
Six thirty, okay. Six thirty at our next meeting, which will be the fifteenth of this month. Good?
Correct.
All righty then.
And are you meeting in the annex?
I think so. I don't think we want to.
Yeah, so we don't have to move? Sure.
Okay, all right.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Wile.
Thank you all for your consideration.
And, and you're instructing me to draft up the decision?
Yes. Yeah. And you can send the decision, the draft of the decision out, of course, ahead of our meeting. So we all have a chance to read through it before we, uh, take it up.
Okay. This is, yeah, this is the first time that you've actually voted on something since I was hired here.
Right, this is a new one.
Ah. All right, so, um, the next item on the agenda.
Right, we need to vote to continue the hearing.
No, we, we closed the public hearing.
We're just, it'll just be.
Yeah, we voted to close it, Brian.
Ah. But I appreciate that because I often screw that kind of thing up. So thank you, Brian.
I always did.
Um, okay, so the next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the proposed zoning amendment of accessory dwelling unit bylaw. Do we have, uh, something to be read for this because it's another public hearing?
Yeah.
We do indeed.
I'm pausing because I, I'm assuming that Katrina will pull up the language. There we go.
That is little.
Yeah, I got, I got it, yeah. Uh, legal notice, West Newbury Planning Board. The West Newbury Planning Board will hold a virtual public hearing on Tuesday, April first, twenty twenty-five at seven forty-five PM to consider a report on the proposed amendment to the town of West Newbury zoning by law, section four point two point four, accessory dwelling units. By making changes that will bring the existing zoning into compliance with new requirements for accessory dwelling units contained within the affordable homes. contained within the Affordable Homes Act. The current zoning by law, along with text of the proposed amendments, are on file with the town clerk. To view the proposed changes, visit the planning board website as noted herein or contact uh the land dot admin at westnewbury.org. Interested person may participate in a public hearing by journeying from computer, tablet, or smartphone at the Zoom address so noted.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. So um what we have here is a public hearing um and for the uh proposed amendments to the existing ADU by law of the town of West Newbury, and it's prompted by the fact that the state finally got around and agreed with us that there should be an ADU by law. And they came up with their own, and then and then they had the chutzpah to to think that their criteria were better than ours. So that's going to mean that we have to have some amendments here to get everything to work together. Uh Sam, you care to just bring us up to date here?
Yep, so this is uh take two. Um, this doesn't change what we adopted for the state by law for the nine hundred square foot or less ADUs. Uh, that's still as of February second is already state law and in place. Uh, we're gonna mirror that language for now in our by law so that um uh basically the the uh definitions are mirrored from the state. Everything there is mirrored, you know, basically from the state uh regulations as needed, except for uh the accessory dwelling unit by special permit, which is all the new added language in the take-two portion. Uh, this is the unique to West Newbury section currently our special permit. For an ADU is a simple sentence that says you can allow for a larger ADU with no particular conditions placed on it. Uh, this carries the conditions that we used to have on the nine hundred square foot or less ADUs into the special permit portion. Uh, but takes them out of the nine hundred square feet or less because state law now prohibits most of it. If that makes sense.
So if we want these conditions, we can't have them for uh nine hundred square foot or less ADU, but we can put them in our particular by law for the town of West Newbury under the special permit section.
Correct.
Good, and um the the question, okay, um wait, first I should ask, is there anything else that you want to tell us before we go into planning board discussions?
No, uh, just that this, you know, when I initially did the uh first draft, it was just to bring it into compliance with the state. Uh, upon further discussion, although our special permit section didn't bring these forward, it was somewhat assumed that they would be applied. Uh, now they will have to be applied for the special permit portion.
Good, and then uh so I'm gonna ask as we did before, everybody on the planning board, then we'll open it up to uh anybody in the audience that would like to. Um, I'm, the only thing they hear that kind of troubles me and kind of took me by surprise um was this number fifteen hundred that sort of popped in out of nowhere, whereas before, you know, instead of having that number of fifteen hundred, uh I would have thought, you know, no more than half the principal dwelling square footage, but can you can you help me out with this fifteen hundred? You you said that that sort of was based on average numbers and kind of.
Yeah, well, the the concern there was, okay, if I have a ten thousand square foot house, do I really get a five thousand square foot ADU?
Gotcha.
Um, so at some point, we felt that there was a a limit. Fifteen hundred's a pretty good sized house.
Yeah.
Um, you know, my house is about fifteen hundred square feet. Me, my wife and kid live there and we have an extra room that we really don't even use. Um, so it 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 just, you know, it it's not a number from anywhere other than just.
Good, and and this this number resulted from discussions with you and maybe Katrina, the town manager, the select board, is that where it came from?
Um, I think it was me, Katrina, and town manager, but I don't know if anyone else weighed in. Uh, was just kind of a, it felt, it just kind of felt right, you know, that that was a reasonable number. Anything that started getting larger than that started just seeming like it might be a second full house on the lot, and I mean, even fifteen hundred is a it's a good good sized unit.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, yeah, okay. All right, that that was my only question on this. Uh, I'll just, Brian, do you have something?
No, I'm I'm just scrolling. Yeah, that's on on my screen. No, I I like the fifteen hundred and that's kind of why I was honing in on the prior uh
Yeah.
About the size and whatnot, so.
Yeah, and I, you know, I I said before I was uncomfortable with this number just popping out of nowhere, but uh it 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 seems, it seems like a good number to me too. Uh, Ann?
Yeah, given that we allowed a, you know, two family by right, if you want to really build two equivalent units, then go ahead and do it that way. And if it's subservient unit, then do it this way.
Uh, that's a good point. Uh, Deb, you have anything for me?
Nope.
Okay. I see that you're here, Angus. Um, I'm going to open this up to uh general discussion. Uh, by the way, everybody who's asked, I said before, um, Zoom allows you to raise your hand, uh, and that pops you up and it's easy to see you, but if you don't or don't know how to do that, but you still want to weigh in, uh, you can just unmute and speak up. I'll recognize you, and by by law, you have to state your name and your uh address. So uh I'm opening this up, and I see that Angus has something he might want to say.
Yeah, I I appreciate the the thoughtful uh discussion, and I appreciate the planning board reconsidering this by law. I know you had already had your hearing some time ago, and I I do think that the uh proposed revised version in front of you is is significantly better, so I'm really glad that you uh, you know, entertained this and are having the hearing. Uh, with regard to your point, Ray, on the fifteen hundred square feet, um, you know, I think Sam put it well. Basically, the idea is to that it's, you know, so uh um accessory unit, it's not a another principal unit, but during the course of your discussion, uh, it did occur to me, you know, there there are maybe going to be situations where someone's looking to convert a secondary structure, whether that's a barn or an outbuilding, a carriage house, that kind of thing, to a ADU. Uh, you know, it is something you might look at um, you know, dare I say revising the language, uh, you know, something along the lines of adding at the end of that subsection uh double I, something along the lines of semicolon provided, however, that the planning board may waive the uh limitation on square footage where the proposed ADU is uh, you know, uh, fully within an existing structure, something like that. Um, so I don't muddy the water, but I thought you made an interesting point that I don't think we had thought about at a staff level, and the intent of this is not to like inhibit these proposals. It's really just to ensure that there's some objective um something that ensures it is, it is in fact a accessory unit, not another principal unit.
Well, well, as you might guess, Angus, I have great respect for my colleagues here on the planning board, always have. And I'd like to think that all future planning boards will also uh be careful in their decisions. But I think having a hard number here uh as part of the by law, I think it might be reassuring to people. And, you know, going down the line, I mean, because you really don't need it there if you if you completely trust the planning board to always make the right decision in the future. But to have in the fifteen hundred there, I think, provides guidance to everybody, applicants and future planning board members alike, so. Uh, it's funny because I sort of flip flopped here. Now I'm kind of thinking that's probably good to have that number there. But I don't know what uh my colleagues uh uh feel about it. And Deb, Brian, Tim?
It's clearer to applicants and board members when there is less discretion involved. Just put it that way.
Yeah, well, well, well said.
Yeah, my only question was, again, uh relating to what the state law says and, you know, where this is something that's under a special permit. I understand that, you know, we have the ability to have uh, you know, additional standards, and I I think that approach is a really good approach, by the way, you know, incorporating the things that we used to have in the um nine hundred square feet and under um into the special permit category. Um, so there was some good protections there, I think, for the town, the citizens and the neighbors and things like that, and I'm I'm okay with the fifteen hundred square feet.
Good, good. All right, well, we we've got uh, you know, by quick count, something like a dozen people listening in. Anybody uh from the public here to add their comments to this public hearing? Okay, not seeing any further input from the public. And uh I'll just go back to the planning board members. Um, you've seen the language. Are you comfortable bringing this forward at uh at town meeting?
Yeah.
Very good. Katrina?
I am, yes.
Katrina, should we uh have a formal vote here?
Yep, yes, you are voting a recommendation for um the town meeting.
So I I'll make the motion that we recommend this language to the town at the town meeting as our proposed amendments to our ADU by law.
Um, could I could I ask uh for clarification too? Is, and is this your recommending language to replace the first one? The first ADU proposal? Um, and I don't, maybe Angus, you want to weigh in on this. I'm not sure how that's being handled. Are there going to be two different versions at town meeting or?
The the request is to, the the request would be for what's considered tonight to uh uh preempt the one that was taken up at the prior hearing.
Okay.
So my my motion.
That explicit would be helpful, Katrina, to make sure the the written record is clear.
Yeah, and my motion is that what we have in front of us tonight in this packet and as available to the town um dated March fourth, twenty twenty-five is the version that we're reviewing here tonight.
Wait a minute, we want all of the places that have been crossed out removed though, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but that's but that's that's what shows up here. Let me just jump back. Make sure that everybody sees this. So this is the language. Notice the date, March fourth. And don't be confused by little second ADU by law proposal. No, 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 this is just the March fourth, twenty twenty-five uh by law proposal.
But all of the, all that stuff that's crossed out will be in in the accessory dwelling unit.
Yes, because these are amendments to our existing ADU by law.
Yeah.
The crossouts are crossouts in our existing by law, and then the double underlines are what we're adding.
Debbie, that that's what you will see in the town meeting warrant, and so that people can see what is being eliminated from the the existing by law and what is being added.
They get that instead of a clean version that's just the proposal.
Often they do both in the booklet. I don't know if they do that anymore, but they used to.
So um regardless of how this is actually presented at town meeting, I want to make sure that everybody's clear on my motion, which I I, was it seconded? I'm not sure it was seconded, but my motion is that this language is what we're recommending to the town at the spring town meeting. That's my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Murphy, and now we can have further discussion amongst us planning board members. It's not a lot. Is everybody clear on what what we're recommending?
Yes.
For my motion.
I I'd just like to see a clean version without all the crossouts provided to the voters.
Well, that's another matter.
That's that noted. I think we could, we could probably have that as a handout in any case.
Yeah, I mean, I not sorry to jump in, Ray. We we could do it either way. I mean, we, you know, we do it this way because we think it's clear. Uh, we could do it both. Um, that would lengthen the booklet.
It would, I'm sorry about that.
I think I think we need to have this lined version.
We need to have the lined version because that's what communicates what's changing.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, you could, you could have a a clean version. I think that's this cycle between MBTA, stormwater, floodplain, animal by law, ADU, I mean, we got a lot, right to farm, we got a lot of bylaws, so we're, it's shaping up to be probably a hundred and thirty page FINCOM booklet, so this would not be the year I would probably be looking to double the pages for bylaws.
Right, all right, so uh my motion is that this is the language we recommend, and it's independent about of how it's actually presented to the town.
Okay.
That's a FINCOM decision.
I'll second that, Ray.
Oh, well, I already had a second from Brian.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Deb.
Okay, so saying no further discussion, all those in favor, Ray Cook, aye?
Yeah, Brady, aye.
Tim Cronin, aye.
Deb Hamilton, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
All right, it's unanimous. Uh, Sam, I can't thank you enough. Appreciate always having the commissioner here. You're welcome to hang out further.
Thank you, Sam.
I'll pass, but I I will give Angus the credit on uh, you know, bringing that language forward because it was kind of expected but not written in the last uh last iteration of our by law, so I think it was a good catch and a a good revision, so.
Very good, and Angus, thank you very much for uh for tuning in and weighing in. I appreciate that, and I'll second Sam's. Thanks for uh getting the language here for us. I think I think this is good.
Yeah, well, we'll find out.
We'll see what the town thinks. Yeah.
Yes, thanks, everyone.
Very good. Thank you.
Bye, Sam.
All right, so next item on the agenda uh is uh review of a performance bond for one twenty-five River Street definitive sub subdivision, uh, also Eagle Nest.
And if we don't have um Mr. Fusco here, then I don't think we have anything to act on. He had submitted a performance bond. However, town council unfortunately did not approve the form of the performance bond. Um, he has been told that, and so I wasn't sure if he was going to be at the meeting or not, but he must be trying to um.
Didn't I, didn't I see it in your packet?
Right, but it, there was something that town council had had rejected it and it was, or it was out for review or something, I don't know, but it wasn't.
Right, town council rejected it. He actually asked me to please ask her again because his attorney had said, you know, of course, you're you're not bonded, you can't, you can't, your name can't be the principal on the performance bond, and she said you have to have the permity in there. So um, so he, I guess, is regrouping and trying to figure out a different way forward.
Right, so we'll call that uh a nov discussion on this agenda item. So this brings us up to uh the proposed um MBTA overlay district by law. And we had a number of things to talk about tonight. Um, we already started talking about um the change regarding um the definition, and we all agreed that it was better to not confuse the town meeting in the spring by trying to do a floor amendment. Um, and I think that makes sense, and and uh, let's see, everybody, everybody was agreement on that. Wendy, were you here for that discussion?
Yes, I was.
Okay, all right. So um, let's talk about other changes.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if if Angus is here um still, if he wanted to say anything about it. Um.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I heard the earlier discussion. I'm I'm comfortable with the the course the planning board has charted. I think um I think it's important to understand that if it's approved in the form uh that's proposed without those minor changes, uh, I think it can be expected from the conversation that we had with HLC on Monday that they would be likely to issue a conditional um compliance letter with regard to the MBTA Act. So it would necessitate bringing it back to town meeting. I think the point was made by one of the planning board members, there may be other things that they find after review as well, and that is true. They they do not provide you a binding letter on the front end to say if you approve the zoning in the proposed form, it shall comply. They will not do that. So there is this chance, I think it was Ann maybe who said that. I think that's a reasonable point. There might be things beyond this. We really don't think there there will be. This bylaw's been reviewed by HLC last spring. It was reviewed again more recently. Uh, we had a detailed meeting with them earlier this week, uh, including myself, Katrina and, uh, Dylan Sussman. As Katrina said earlier, they, they commended, you know, the work that's been done. Uh, so, you know, we don't think there's going to be any changes, but there could be. So I just, as long as everyone understands that even if it's approved, uh, it would be a conditional compliance and it would, uh, necessitate a, another vote.
Yeah, and I, I think, I mean, I for one understand, and I think we understand that, uh, I think the chance of, we, we want, or it's my opinion that we want the greatest chance of success in passing this in the spring, and, and Brian's, I take Brian's point to heart here, the less confusing it is, the better off we are. And, uh, making a couple of tweaks at fall town meeting, I think, uh, wouldn't be a big deal. Um, and I think, I think it's, it, I think that's the best path forward. That's just my opinion. And I assume that, uh, everybody heard you, Angus, I'm looking at their faces, Brian, Tim, Deb, and yeah, we're all good with that. All right, Katrina, will you help me out here and guide me as to how we address these other things that we discussed? I know there was the forty and thirty-five foot height limit.
Mm-hmm. So, so I think, I'm sorry.
You had a list of the, of sort of a general-
Yes.
Right, so first, um, the board should, um, discuss and vote on the proposed edits included in the MCMOD version that was available at the public hearing. And so you all have that version.
Yes.
With the L edits and then the highlighted areas. Um, and that was available to the public, the night of the public hearing in paper form. It's been up on the website. So these are all the, all the changes that the planning board, you can either review them one by one, or I, I suggest that you ask members if they have any change in particular that, that they want to discuss, set that aside and then vote on the others, and then revisit the ones that are set aside and talk about it and then vote, um, which way you want to go, because there's the two that I did pull out that you have to choose on building height, um, choose either thirty-five feet or forty feet. And then in regards to the inclusionary requirement waiver, you have to vote to either delete it or keep, or keep it.
Well, I, I appreciate the way that you've laid out a possible path forward here. I think we should just go straight at it and talk about the height and the inclusionary zoning.
Yeah, so those are the two that I, yes.
Right.
Okay, so let's start out with the height. So, um, forty feet, uh, struck, one of the select board members is being too high. And, um, thirty-five feet, I think, is what we allow in town already.
Yes.
So I think it kind of makes sense to, and again, I think it, it, uh, increases the chance of success at spring town meeting of the overall proposal to, to change it to thirty-five feet. So that's where I'm at. Brian, Ann, Deb, Tim?
Yep, I'm good with that.
Yes, I think that we should try to keep things very consistent. The density is the big change here, but I think actually the height and the inclusionary both, I feel, should mirror, uh, what happens with every other project in town.
Yeah, how, refresh my memory, the, the forty came out. I think when we were-
That was, that was the consultant's recommendation.
Right, and said, maybe you'd want to go this to get y- you know, that, that third floor apartment or condo living space, and, and, and the architect probably refreshed-
Yeah, well, it's, it's in his di, it shows in his diagram, but my feeling is if part of the, the pitch, if you will, part of the, the rubric is that these structures would mirror other structures in town, then I think they should mirror other structures in town.
Yeah, I'm, I'm guessing they got to the forty because they're figuring, I don't know, Ann, correct me on here, but you got an eight-foot clear height and then add another footer, a foot and a half in for floor heights and stuff. So you're talking about nine feet, nine to ten feet per floor, that gets you up to twenty-seven to thirty feet there, and then you put it, put a roof on it, and that's, they want the forty feet because it gives them a little more freedom architecturally. I, I don't, I'm guessing that's-
Or for, or for habitable third floor, which, you know, again, is not necessarily something that I would have envisioned, but that's me.
Okay, so, um-
Do we have-
Three stories is something that the state requires.
But you could still do three stories, let's say twenty-seven feet there, and still have another seven feet for your roof pitch. So, okay, so it sounds like everybody's amenable to the thirty-five feet there.
Yes, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Do we need to vote on these changes one by one or, or, uh, no, okay?
Are we looking?
I think you can, if you all know that you're on the same page with that, I think it'll all come out in the final vote if someone is against it, so, um, just make one vote.
All right, so-
Right, there might be someone in the public though who might have an opinion about-
This isn't a public hearing though.
Oh, all right.
But even though it's not a public hearing, uh, you know, yeah, uh, it's sort of our tradition that if, if somebody who's present wants to speak up, uh,
Right.
Normally within reason, we'd, we, we hear them. Okay, so, uh, by the way, and, and let me just make that clear, if, if somebody in the audience wants to weigh in on something, you can let Katrina know, you can raise the hand, you can even unmute yourself and speak up, I'll recognize you. But we'll just keep going here. Now, the other thing that, uh, the other kind of hot topic here is right now in town, of course, we have an inclusionary zoning bylaw, and there has to be some in, uh, some housing that meets the state standards for, uh, affordable units. And the question here, Katrina, correct me if I don't get this just right, but as the bylaw was originally envisioned, there could be an exception made at the discretion of the planning board. And what we're talking about now is just removing that language that allows that exception. If I got that right, Katrina?
Yes.
So, uh, planning board members, I think Ann snuck in her opinion here by saying that as much as possible, this bylaw should conform with the existing bylaws in town. I agree with that. Brian, Tim, Deb?
I agree with that.
Brian, Deb?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm fine with, uh, taking this out. I mean, I think we, we talked about it over, well, well over a year ago. You know, and how, how does one really determine that it's financially not feasible and we were gonna have accountants hired and all of this, and it, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to-
I, I see you, John, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for your, to weigh in in just a sec.
Um, my question is, um, would the developer be obligated to create affordable units or can they do money instead? I can't remember what we call that, but like what happened on Major Boyd, uh, where he didn't build affordable units, but he contributed to the-
Yeah, if, if he, I think the fractional units, um-
Yeah.
There's financial, uh-
It can be either one?
No, you have to provide the units, um, except that if, you know, if it doesn't divide out evenly, then whatever's left over is, uh, is then compensated for with contribution. Financial contribution. That's the way it exists. The other thing that I, I would, I would point out before I get John's input here is it was very clear to me at the public hearings that we had, that people really want to as much affordable housing as possible here. And we kept explaining that that wasn't part of the state, uh, law, and that the state wouldn't allow us to require more than, um, than the normal. So I, I think that, you know, that's a reason to, to take out the possibility of the exception. Yeah? Everybody, uh, and now, uh, I want to be very careful here. Is everybody okay if we get Mr. Sarkis's opinion on this? Is that all right?
Yes.
Sure, that's all.
John, please, uh, weigh in. And John, I, you, you did live in town, you no longer live in town, and you have an interest in the piece of land under discussion at this point. Is that correct?
Correct.
I just wanted to be- be upfront with everybody here. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my point on the matter, well, first of all, I would, I would say that generally I agree with everything that, uh, you've all said about this matter, is that it makes it clearer if it, if inclusionary is required. Uh, there was a sentiment involved. Uh, the downside to, uh, the downside to it is that it takes away some of the flexibility from the developer. And one of the, the matters that, uh, or one of the features that I was going to propose in my project, if it ever comes to that, was, uh, an element of rental housing, which is very difficult to do today, uh, to create, uh, ha, uh, rental housing without a subsidy. Uh, so in, in my mind, uh, you know, the, the various types of housing, the, the alternative forms are more valuable than a couple of, you know, in a small project like this, there'll be thirty to thirty-six units, something in that range, uh, uh, than a couple of affordable units. It'd be easier for me, for example, financially, to create, uh, five or six apartment-type dwellings and have them be unrestricted than it would be for me to create three, uh, for sale units and have them be restricted. The financial ramifications of three units being restricted are greater than me creating six units and holding them and renting them.
Gotcha. So what, what you're saying is that the rental units would be in effect affordable because they're rental units, but they wouldn't qualify as housing units under the state affordable units bit.
I- i- in effect, yes, a- and furthermore, it just, you know, the, the, the intent of the, of the MBTA zoning was to allow some flexibility here.
Yep.
Give the developers some, some ability to create all other types of, of housing other than McMansions. And, you know, the way the bylaw was, was crafted, or the proposed bylaw was crafted, it was done well. I mean, it, it fits the site well. It allows me to put a large structure at the front of the site like a, a farmhouse with a, a barn attached to it and put rentals in it. I think it's, it's a great looking thing. Uh, it, you know, the flexibility is the key.
Okay, but let me, let me ask you this. The way the language, the, the section that we're talking about is eight four ten four. And, uh, and we're talking about deleting it, and it would say that we may waive some or all of the inclusionary hu- housing provisions of section six point one when the applicant demonstrates that such requirements are financially infeasible. And, and that's how how do you satisfy a skeptical person in town just looking in on what we're doing? How do you satisfy them that they, you, you have sufficiently demonstrated that something is, quote, financially infeasible?
Well, Ray, this language was written by some human. The language could be different. It could be, you know, like other things we've written in the past where the applicant can demonstrate to the satisfaction of the planning board that it's, uh, results in a, you know, project that better fulfills through the intent of the bylaw or some such thing.
Right? Uh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm just, just poking that in there for a discussion.
Yeah, although a couple of things. One is such language then would require a new public hearing thing or, or something on the floor because it wasn't available to the public when we had our public hearing. I think we run, we run into a logistical issue there.
Yeah, wasn't thinking about that.
And then the other thing that we run into here is there are people in town who are concerned that if you don't require the inclusionary zoning, that the town actually backslides on that whole bit. So like, let's, let's say in spirit, let's, uh, you know, I kind of agree with Mr. Sarkis's argument here. If, if you've got a, you know, I, I've just throw out a number, ten rental units. Logistically, it's, you don't have to deal with the whole, uh, what is it, bidding process, qualified applicants, all this kind of stuff that has to go along with it. You just, you just build a bunch of rental units and you put them out there and they're never going to be ridiculously expensive because they're rental units, right? Just by their nature. So you're sort of, that's matching the spirit and the intent. Um, and logistically, it's far easier. Uh, so I kind of agree with that spirit, but when you get to the hard numbers that the state would require for forty B and all that kind of stuff, uh, you, you're kind of backsliding. I don't know, Brian? Tim, Deb?
I, I love the idea of putting six apartments in there. If there's any way that that can be permitted, uh, you know, these are, I'm thinking of the old people in town, the single ladies who are living in houses who'd like to stay in town and they could rent an apartment or-
I mean, there's nothing preventing a developer from, from, from having rental units as part of the development, regardless of whether we require the inclusionary zoning.
Right, that's true.
Let me, let me ask you something else. I, and I truly don't know the answer to this, but, uh, we have an affordable housing group in town. And there is money set aside for affordable housing um, through the, uh, what, the-
Affordable Housing Trust.
You're not the affordable, yeah, Affordable Housing Trust, but also the, the-
The Housing Authority, but the, the hoops-
No, 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 the, the money that the state gets is part of it.
The CPA money goes to the Housing Authority.
Okay, all right, well, the CPA money is, I guess, is what I'm getting at. It, would it be possible to work with a potential developer to, to offset some of these costs through that?
That's the trust. I thi, I think you may be getting away from the issue.
Well, no, I, it's not, it's, it is, and Wendy, I wanted to hear what you had to say there, Wendy.
Yeah, so that's the, the intent of the hu- Housing Trust is to, um, supplement, you know, a, a market rate unit, um, and make it affordable with the funds that the trust, uh, holds currently.
Okay, all right. So, go ahead, Brian.
I mean, with, that could be a side arrangement, I presume, with any developer.
That's what I'm saying.
Who has an interest, it, it, you know, in a, whether it's on this parcel or some other parcel at, and maybe not even anything to do with MBTA.
Yes.
You just have to work out the legal arrangements.
Yes, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to take the whole discussion in. I mean, yeah, I, I appreciate, you know, I, I learned years ago that there are logistical and financial reasons why it's, it really is hard for a developer to, uh, to to have inclusionary housing as part of their project. It, it, it's hard to do, and it's expensive to do. So, but as part of our greater discussion on whether or not to have this language pulled from our proposed bylaw, section eight four ten four, what we're, what, what's on the table before us right now is whether or not we want to leave it so that we can waive the inclusionary housing provisions when the applicant demonstrates that such requirements are financially infeasible. Do we want to leave that in so that we have the ability as a planning board to waive that? Or do we want to remove it so that any developer working on, on this overlay district, working this overlay district, will have to provide the inclusionary units? That's the discussion at hand.
So now I'm going to go, say the opposite of what I said the first time, which is if we have a desire to introduce flexibility, then we should leave the waiver language in.
Well, the, the, the only criteria in the wa- Well, the the only criteria in the waiver language is that the applicant demonstrates that such requirements are financially infeasible.
Right. But then again, to take the opposite position from what Brian said, that could be a fairly wide-ranging conversation.
And then to come back to something you said earlier tonight, we're better off when we don't have this.
I know. I'm just trying to get everything out there for the conversation.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. And that's why Tim's been quiet. I appreciate more input from Tim, Deb, and Brian here.
Sure. So, yeah, my thought is we don't have any different standard than for, you know, other types of development in town. You know, I I hear what's said about the rental, you know, the rental option. That's great, you know, but we're not talking about a specific development here and approving a specific development. I think what we're talking about is, you know, making something work for the town, and the town has already adopted that inclusionary bylaw. So, you know, there's there was some wisdom at that time there about how to approach it. And, you know, if it doesn't have the flexibility about rental units, that's unfortunate. But I think, you know, the townspeople have already kind of spoken and, you know, I I'm reluctant to have a different standard for this, you know, development than for other developments in town.
Appreciate that. Deb? Any any further discussion?
She's muted.
Could I ask? Oh, I'm sorry.
I I would just I I I'd like to keep that option open, that a developer could do apartments in there. I don't know how to thread this needle. I'm sorry.
But yeah, just to be clear, Deb, a developer can always decide to do rental units. That's up to the the developer's going to work his or her spreadsheet and figure out whether or not rental units are part of what they're proposing or not. The the these would be affordable units that would qualify with the state as affordable units.
As apartments. Yeah, good.
And if apartments could, there's a way for the state to accept apartments as affordable housing units as well. Oh, and John, I I will come back to you, John.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, Brian?
Yeah, this this, I guess, for Katrina, you the note on here says EOHLC has approved other towns' bylaws that do not include the ability to waive inclusionary housing requirements and require no more than ten percent, et cetera, et cetera. Did they comment specifically on this in your recent discussion? Did this?
No, no, they they didn't comment on this. That was a question for Dylan. And I asked him specifically, is that something that the state required us to have the ability to waive the inclusionary housing? And he said, oh, no, they've they've approved other towns' bylaws that don't include the ability to to waive the requirements. And truthfully, the 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 problem I I foresee the board having is is proving this financial infeasibility. That's the tough part. I don't know what the applicant is supposed to submit for the board. I don't know what kind of consultant the 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 board would likely hire to review those financial documents. It's just, it's difficult to prove.
John, I see you there. And then I see Angus turn on his camera. That's usually an indication that Angus wants to say something too. But go ahead, John.
Again, I I don't dispute anything anybody said here. It would be a sort of a gray area, a difficult thing to prove. Obviously, a developer could provide a full-blown pro forma. And the board could, you know, it's the burden of proof type of thing, right? So so it would be ultimately the board's decision as to whether or not the board burden of proof has been has been met. But as a former board member, you know, it's it's always important to understand how these things translate to the ultimate development. And so to put numbers on things, first of all, let's talk about the finances, numbers, and then numbers of units, density. Average, as as I understand it, the a for-sale unit would be restricted to about two hundred thousand dollars, a little bit more than two hundred thousand dollars under the current state set of guidelines for that. My land and road costs alone are about that. Never mind the unit. So if that unit is going to look like the other units, that, you know, that that unit translates to a direct cost to me.
Well, it 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 it's basically a tax on the other people that are buying the market rate units, right?
Well, yes and no. It 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 would also translate to, you know, it's a tax on them. I'd have no choice but to try to raise the prices there or to try to design them to be bigger, to increase the profit margin on them to make up for it or put more units in. Or, you know, and, you know, maybe maybe it forces me to look at, you know, forty-five smaller units versus, you know, thirty regular units or twenty-eight regular regular units and and an apartment building of four or six or or two of them at four or six.
So the the bottom the bottom line is you you got to make your spreadsheet work, and these these units are costing you, and you got to make up those costs someplace.
That's right. The bottom the bottom line is the investors and the banks, everybody else that's involved has their input also. And there's nothing I can do about that. I didn't make those rules, you know? But but it I just want to be clear, you know, th- this type of thing is a financial has a financial effect, and a financial effect translates to a density and a design effect. So under the current set of of regulations, the way the way it's written right now, it allows me to leave a lot of green space at the front of the site. It allows me to do things that I I I won't be able to do if this is part of the, you know, part of the situation. For example, I have mostly duplexes on site. I have many with first-floor master bedrooms. They take up a little more space on site than ones that don't have first-floor master bedrooms. First-floor master bedrooms do not bring schoolkids into the into the town.
Yeah, I I my only comment there.
You can see the domino effect here, I hope, you know?
Oh, yeah, I know.
Absolutely.
So I'm not suggesting one thing or another. I've always been, as you know, a fan and an advocate for very clear rules, right? And I understand the nature of this automatically promotes some sort of ambiguity or or questions, let's say. I just would like the board to to know, you know, that it it does have an effect on the design ultimately.
Very good. Angus?
Yeah, so I just I guess I wanted to just echo what Katrina said earlier about the challenge of objectively finding that the waiver is is financially justified. A couple of analogous situations, both of which are you know, heavily regulated, and there's tons of precedent. One is forty B, where the conditions imposed by ZBA cannot, quote, unduly restrict opportunities for development. Or I'm sorry, actually, that's that's the other one. That's forty R. Forty B, the conditions imposed by the ZBA cannot render a project uneconomic. And that's like very, there's a thing to that. And and with forty R, it's the not unduly restrict, and that's a term that's defined in in the state regulation. So I've I've had a lot of experience in both of those arenas, and basically, the way I've seen that play out is exactly what Mr. Sarkis referenced, and I think Katrina was alluding to, which is a pro forma where the the applicant is submitting basically their financials, their construction costs, their projected sale or or, you know, rental revenues, whatever the case may be, and the town or, you know, the permit granting authority is getting a peer review by a qualified, basically, development you know, economist to say those numbers are valid or they're not. So I'm not trying to suggest you should or shouldn't do it. I am, I guess what I'm saying is if you do provide for a path to a waiver that is based on a finding of the planning board that the waiver is financially justified, I do think you can anticipate that leading to a potential for you know, some third-party review, because that's not something the planning board or the town planner or anyone and town staff is going to be able to look at pro forma and say, yeah, those construction numbers are realistic. So like in Westford, where they dealt with, I think, I think, three forty Bs during the years I was there. This was a very typical part of the ZBA process. They would get the pro forma. They they had a consultant. They 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 used, the board used. And and often, and I explained this to Katrina a couple of weeks ago, there were times I recall where an entire session of a public hearing for a forty B was the pro forma review. It was a big thing, is is my point.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Well, planning board members, I'm open to more discussion on this, or I'm open to just voting on this particular thing. Brian?
Yeah. Actually, I'm I'm persuaded to leave it in. I I I think perhaps the language could be could have been improved if if we we but we can't change that now. It's either leave it or take it out. And I'm I'm persuaded that it I think there's enough guardrails that with with good oversight, we we I'm going to vote to leave it in. Basically.
Gotcha. I don't know. And and Tim, Deb, help me out here. What do you think we should do?
I don't know what.
I'm I'm thinking that the flexibility of keeping the waiver is probably useful to have. We have peer review for many other things. We have it for traffic. We have it for stormwater. I mean, you know, it's not like we're not familiar with the process.
Strikes me as an additional burden on the potential developer, a delay involved in the whole process when this is supposed to be a supposed to speed things up, make everything by right.
They don't have to request the waiver.
That's true.
True.
The board doesn't have to grant the waiver either.
Right. It says may waive.
I don't know. Tim, Deb?
I I haven't changed my mind on this. I I think it should come out.
Yeah. Well, I do think we should vote on this particular thing. So even if you don't like the motion, I appreciate a second so that we can have a vote on it. So I move that we leave the language in there that allows the waiver when the applicant demonstrates that such requirements are financially infeasible. So that's my motion, whether or not you support it.
Second.
Yeah, the second. So I doubt there's much further discussion on this other than me saying, wow, it's still, I just don't like the vague thing of financially infeasible. I mean, even just now, Mr. Sarkis is a seasoned veteran of developing things, was saying like, you know, I'd be forced to do this and forced to do the other thing to make it work. And to me, that's saying that you just told me that it is financially feasible, just not the way you originally envisioned it. So then that then becomes thing, this pro forma thing. I don't know what a pro forma is, but submitting a spreadsheet with numbers. I assume that that would be for a particular vision of of how it would go, and under that vision, it wouldn't be financially invisible, but maybe there'd be another one that could. So I I'm inclined to to pull the language on the waiver. Tim said he was inclined to pull it. Brian and Ann are inclined to leave it in. So Deb, I don't know if you want to say anything before I call for a vote.
I I I don't like being in this position.
I don't either.
It's okay. We're all in this position. You just happened to go last.
You don't have to say anything. It's just your chance to persuade people to go with the way you want it to go.
I I don't I don't know how I want it to go. I want it to go in a way that creates some possibilities for getting young people into housing in West Newbury and keeping old people in small units in West Newbury. I don't know which option keeps that door open. I I guess, John, do you have an opinion?
I know.
No, no, no.
No, I'm not letting John. I'm not. I'm letting John put input in at this point because we've got a motion on the floor.
All right, I I
But Brian, go ahead.
Go ahead, Brian.
I'll add a thought to that for for Deb's edification there.
Thank you.
I think the 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 language allows us to review what the developer suggests. And again, it's an inartful term, financially infeasible, but allows us to review. And I I don't see anything that says we would be wouldn't be within our rights to say, well, we have options A, B, or C. And what what do we get? And and does one of those options more closely align with what you just mentioned? And I support what you just mentioned, you know, some keep trying to keep some younger people here in places for people who live in large houses and want to downsize into something smaller and whatnot. And if I could be persuaded that financially that makes sense and we get that in a design, then I think it's worth keeping the language in place.
Okay, then that's my thought as well.
That's kind of where I'm at.
The the only thing I'd respond to is that I think that's the whole point of the inclusionary bylaw, though, right? And that's why the town, I think, I I wasn't in town, I think, at the time when it was adopted, but I'm guessing that's why it was. You know, that's the criteria for that the state established for affordable housing and people that, you know, don't make a lot of money, you know, that's that's the only way that, you know, they would be getting into West Newbury. I'm just dubious that these are going to be market rate rental units, and they aren't going to be affordable at all. So.
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, I know. I I don't disagree with that. What I personally disagree with is the inflexibility of the state guidelines and mandates.
Yes.
Their their vision of what is affordable
Right.
versus West Newbury does not align in 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 and it doesn't align in many communities.
Right.
For the people that live in town that want to stay in town and into some option, but they 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 have too much in assets. If they have a larger house, they they're not going to meet the asset test, which is the the downside of the the strict state guideline about affordability. So that's always frustrated me. We we did the inclusionary because frankly, we were thinking we did that because it it would allow a path to prevent forty B developments if you would make some progress.
Okay.
I will never hit that that guideline in our town anyway. But
But the idea was not not to backslide, not to go the wrong direction.
Yes, yeah. So that that's my two cents, right? Whatever.
Thanks, bud.
My last two cents on this is, again, the language says that the applicant has to demonstrate that the inclusionary housing provisions of six point one are financially infeasible. Because it doesn't say to the satisfaction of the planning board that the alternative plan would actually result in better housing for West Newbury. It's got to be financially infeasible. All right, then. If there's no further discussion, what did I propose? That we leave it in or take it out? I forget.
The motion was to leave it in.
Language.
To keep it.
The motion was to leave it in. So if you want, if you want the la, if you want the option for a waiver, you would vote in favor of this. All those in favor?
Brian Murphy, aye.
Anne Bardina, aye.
Deb Hamilton, aye.
All those opposed? Ray Cook, aye.
Tim Cronin, aye. Or nay?
So the motion passes. Nay, yeah, right.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, no, I needed to make that mistake too. So so the motion passes, the vote of three to two. On that language, we already discussed the thirty-five foot there, and so that we confirm. Katrina, is there now some sort of Katrina, is there now some sort of motion I can make to?
You can you can motion to make a positive recommendation on the um, MCMOD bylaw. And all the edits that you just went over. Um, and make a positive recommendation to town meeting. You can keep it simple, but you need to use the language.
Okay.
The draft report that I gave you.
Well, I'm looking.
I know I can get it up online.
Please do so.
Okay.
I think I found it. Is it page eighty seven?
Yes, that's it. Are you bringing it up or do you want me to?
Yeah, go go ahead and bring it up.
Um, so do you all see the two separate motions?
Yes.
Okay. The second one is the normal one where you're voting to make a positive recommendation to town meeting. The first one is the one that the state is requiring us to make. We need to make that statement.
Okay, so my first motion is that we find that the proposed uh, McMod bylaw meets the state requirement of a minimum. Gross density of fifteen units per acre on a minimum of five point eight acres and that one eighty seven Main Street location. Is an eligible location by virtue of its being located along Main Street, which is characterized by concentrated development. Is less than half mile from the business district and is on a public bus route. I need a second on that motion.
Second.
Thank you. So this is a this is a required uh, vote to make this all work. Uh, any further discussion? Not all those in favor? Ray Cook, aye.
And Murdine, aye.
Tim Cronin, aye.
Deb Hamilton, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
It's unanimous. My second motion is that we recommend to town meeting voters per section five of Mass General Law, chapter forty A. To approve approve the proposed McMod zoning amendment as discussed tonight with changing the height limitation from forty to thirty five feet. And to be clear, leaving in the possibility of a waiver to the inclusionary zoning bylaw. When it's found that complying is financially infeasible.
Second.
Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Ray Cook, aye.
And Bardina, aye.
Tim Cronin, aye.
Deb Hamilton, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
It's unanimous. Katrina, did we do things well enough here? Are we good?
You did. Um, and we do have a little more discussion. Um, just about the forum, but we have we have acted on the um, the McMod bylaw. And we've discussed the gross density already. So now if we could talk about. Um, oh, I'm sorry. We did receive a letter from the select board about an abutter meeting next Tuesday.
Oh, yeah, I saw that.
That I I mean, I could have brought this up under correspondence, but I figured it it's more appropriate to bring it up here. Um, but we just received this today. It's not really on the agenda, so I'm just updating you to let you know. That the select board will be holding a meeting next Tuesday. Um, and they're meeting, um, they're inviting John Sarkis. I'm about to lose my voice. Um, to the meeting and it's there, it they're they're holding it just to discuss um, the proposed bylaw.
Oh, well, okay. What time?
And actually, if we're not discussing the proposed bylaws, discussing the proposed plans for development of the property. So that a butters can understand what's being proposed either with or without the bylaw.
I'm reading your letter as I as I'm talking.
So just to be clear, Wendy, um, this is a little different than how I would go about it, but obviously the select board saw a need for this. This is. A meeting where you will discuss. With any anybody who cares to attend the meeting, but if you're specifically thinking about the abutter showing up. Or you would be talking about. A potential development. That would occur on this piece of property. Whether or not the MBTA bylaw passes?
Yeah, the the thinking was that, you know, we've tried really hard to just focus on the overlay zoning. You know, not a specific development, and perhaps we've gone too far, not acknowledged that a development is going to happen on that property. So the select board thought it had a little bit more leeway than the planning board does because we are not a permitting agency and we can invite Mr. Sarkis in. Listen to what he plans and and share that with the butters. Um, because the property will be developed, so we just want to know what what he's planning.
So it's an informational meeting about. About a a possible development. With a likely developer.
Yes, and and specifically in the letter, we noted that it's not an a forum for public comment on the proposed bylaw or on the work of the planning board. It's it's specifically about. That property and what what could potentially be built there.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you for that clarification. And and since I've got you here and since you unmuted and whatnot, it are you anticipating or would you like any? Participation from planning board members?
No, I mean, we we just, um, I mean, you're welcome to come, of course, but um, it's it's just an opportunity for the butters and anybody else who's interested to to get some specific information so they understand what's what's planned.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. Uh, other planning board members, any quick questions for Wendy about this meeting next week?
I I didn't hear what time.
Uh, six to eight. It's there's not going to be a remote option, but we will record it so that um, you know, people can view it after.
And it it will be in the nineteen ten building?
It'll be in the annex.
In the annex.
Yeah.
Thank you. Very good. Oh, my God, there's there's comments in chat and are they relevant? No, okay, all right, that's. No new comment there. All right, very good. And then um, Katrina, you mentioned um. Having a a little discussion about the our next meeting.
Right, on April fifteenth, um, and remember, we will start the meeting at six thirty.
Yes.
Um, hopefully everyone's there a little before six thirty. I know we'll be busy setting up the room, so we'll just have to prepare to. Have it um, finished by by six thirty. So I've been working on the slideshow, so we have to discuss. The presentation that night. And so I do have a rough draft, um. Where there will be different people presenting um, different sections of it. Um, Ian Burns will be presenting. Uh, the first part and he'll explain what is the MBTA law. Um, what is required of West Newbury, et cetera. Um, the town manager Angus will be presenting um, what the repercussions will be for not adopting the MBTA.
Okay.
And then the next section will be. How the proposed um, McMod bylaw was developed, um, such as how was the public involved? How was the site location chosen, uh, zoning requirements, development standards? If no one else wants to um, present this part, I I can I can do it for you. Um, and then the last part, though, that I think it would be appropriate to have a planning board member. How did the planning board decide which of the two parcels to use for the proposed overlay district? And as I said, I'm developing the all the slides for this, and so we we will have slides for this presentation. Um, we just need to decide who will be presenting what.
Yeah, I. I I'm open, but if there's no burning desire on other planning board members to to do that, I think probably. Uh, as chair, that's probably where I step in. And I'm I'm fine with doing that. I don't I don't know, Brian.
You were fine. I I think we all can add as needed or whatever, but I I think you did a fine job.
I would be counting on that.
Yeah, I think especially on the the third item, how it was developed and all that. Katrina offered to do it. Um, but she wasn't here when a lot of that happened, so I think we ought to all be ready to. Contribute to that at least.
If anyone else wants to do it, feel free.
I I think I think that's that's good. So why don't we do it this way? Why don't you tag team that? Ann and Katrina work on how it was developed. And then uh, Katrina, you and I can work on how do we decide which of the two parcels? With the understanding, of course, that throughout this entire thing, uh, and planning board members can contribute as we go along.
Right.
And again, this is this is different than a public hearing. This is an informational.
Right.
Session.
And I'm working with Ian on um, displays. Um, we may have um, one display. That asks for any questions for those shy residents that don't want to speak up. Um, I also want to make it make a point to not have the the um. Podium or whatever, um, the lectern that they had to stand um, facing the audience. I think some of them didn't want to go up there.
Yeah. You know, the the idea that that they could, uh, we can have three by five cards there and people can put their questions on a card.
Right, and that we'll answer them at the end of the night because there's no more time to answer at any other meeting. Um, but maybe just have a microphone facing the planning board so people can go up and ask the board the question and not turn around and face the audience.
If they want to. And then the other thing too is is um, during the meeting. Like I can kind of look through the cards. And try and, you know, try to put the same questions together sort of thing. So maybe I could answer like. I see three similar questions and have one response to that. I think that makes sense. And also probably go quicker if people aren't hustling up to a microphone and feeling awkward about which way they should face.
Yeah, and I think I think it really is important for you to be very strict, and I know that people will want to talk from their seats, but I don't think it's fair. To the people that are zooming in. Um, they just can't hear the questions and they can't hear what's going on.
Yeah.
They have to go to the microphone.
We heard those complaints.
Yes, and I think the the other thing again is is. Not being a public hearing, I think that it answering questions from three by five cards, I think, makes sense.
Okay, so we'll have a a place to ask questions. Um, I can, we can put up pretty pictures, but I I I'm not sure. Um, exactly what we will put up on the wall. Um, I I'll try and I'll I'll send out um, an email and keep you all updated. Um.
Well, I I've I've flipped through your slides that that you brought forward and with the placeholders and whatnot. I think those are all good. And then.
That's right, I did send it out to the board.
Yeah, it's part of the packet.
That's right. I sent everything out.
And then, you know, I'm I'm sure that we can figure out things.
I didn't see the slideshow.
See a slideshow.
Oh, uh, well, it's in the planning board packet, um, starting on page ninety three.
So and and if you go to the town website, remember I updated the packet? So there's an April first packet, then there's an April first um, updated.
Well, that that's why I I didn't go down to page ninety three. I I. Sorry.
And I did, but I didn't see it, so.
Well, that might that might be the 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 change that occurred in the very latest.
Yeah, okay, I'll look it up.
Could I just throw something out for consideration? Um.
Please.
Could. Could we meet in the the are either the offices or the? Second floor meeting room. For the uh, while hearing and then adjourn. To the uh, annex. I'm I'm just concerned. I mean, I think, you know. With with the applicant, he it it could be noisy and confusing and whatnot.
The only problem I have there is that that I think we already said we would meet at the annex.
Well, we haven't posted anything yet, so.
That's true.
It's going to be posted. I I it just.
It is the same address.
It may be, it may be. It's going to be quieter. And whatnot, but.
I do like that, Brian, because I I'm a little worried too, because, you know, logistically, it is, it's difficult setting that room up too.
All right, why don't why don't we do that, Ben?
Okay.
I hereby declare. Well, we, you know, we'll we'll meet at six thirty in the planning board office. Will dispose of Mr. Uh, Wiles' uh, request.
Yes. I think it's fair to him as well. It's a.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah, it kind of muddies the waters.
Good.
So. So and and that will be the whole planning board meeting because the other meeting is really. It's still a meeting.
It it is.
So. Same agenda or two separate agendas?
I think that it would be agenda for him in in the planning board office and then we adjourn to the.
Yeah, but I mean, there's just one agenda. There's one agenda that you put forward to the town. You just mentioned that.
Two different locations?
Yeah. It's fine. It'll be fine.
Okay.
I I do, I don't know who Carl Mosley is, but uh, Carl's got his hand up.
Uh, yes, this is Carl Mosley, one seventy five Main Street.
Thank you.
So this. Meeting's on April eighth now with the select board and the public forum on the fifteenth. I having attended the previous public hearing. I I wanted to make sure that you're going to differentiate these gatherings from public hearings. Clearly, clearly differentiate.
Yeah, I will do. I do my part uh, on the fifteenth to make sure that people are clear. What we're doing at our planning board meeting on the fifteenth and that it's not a public hearing. Uh, and I assuming that the select board. Under the capable guidance of uh, Wendy Reed will also be very clear as to the nature of that meeting to the people in attendance and also in public notifications.
Okay, thank you.
I I your comments, your comments well taken, Mr. Mosley. Good.
I think I think that does it for everything on the agenda.
Oh, come on.
No. You know, we used to do, we used to do three hour meetings. That was pretty routine for us.
Great, I do have a comment. There's a someone has written in the chat reminding folks that um. For the meeting on the fifteenth that the it says it's in the annex on the post.
And it will be.
And it is still in the annex at seven for that forum.
That's right. So uh, for anybody still in attendance and specifically for.
Suzie's iPhone.
Suzie's iPhone. Um, we we've got uh, we've got a uh. We're expecting to vote. On a special permit application with respect to extending the allowable. Floor area for an ADU. That we had a public hearing for tonight. We discussed it tonight, but we didn't make the final vote because we wanted to see the final language. Uh, before we made that vote. So we're going to do that at six thirty, which is uh. An early start for us and we'll do that in our office. And then we will adjourn and go to the annex. Or the advertised meeting where we're talking about. The informational meeting for the town with respect to the McMod. You bet. Glad to do it. Suzie's iPhone. Um, let's see, you're going back to our agenda. We already dealt with the meeting, the minutes, the the correspondence, the administrative details we've sort of covered as we've gone along tonight. Uh, we've talked about uh, items for future planning board agendas. Uh, Katrina, other planning board members, anything else that we need to? Uh, talk about before we adjourn tonight?
I don't have anything.
No. Well, if not, then I move to adjourn at nine fifty four. All is in favor? Ray Cook, aye.
Bardina, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye.
Thank you all very much. We're adjourned.
Thank you, Katrina. Good job.
Thank you, Katrina. Good job.